This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
And Kate?
Here.
Lynn Cameron?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tiwak?
Here.
Bonn-Heaton?
Here.
Well?
Here.
Forthman?
John?
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, May 8, 2017 session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night sessions, the council conducts public hearings and holds public discussions in which we listen to public input and sometimes ask questions, all in preparation for our legislative session, which convenes in this chamber tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM. We do have some interesting items on our agenda this evening, one of which is considering the first-of-its-kind veteran tribute, which may go in along the Forest Street Greenway. We'll also be considering some -- fixing some speed limit things, I guess, around our city. It's a complicated ordinance, but we'll get through it. We do welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers tonight and are grateful, as always, to community television for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. For those of you who wish to speak, I'll just briefly review the protocol. When I introduce an agenda item, the item is discussed by a staff person, and then council members ask a couple of questions sometimes, and then you are invited to approach the podium if you have something to say about that particular item. We do have -- though we have a small audience tonight, we do institute a five-minute speaking limit to each speaker. We find that is a fair way to make sure the first person has as much time as the last person. We'll help you through that five minutes with the light system. A green light is the beginning; a red light signifies that your five minutes have come to an end. You don't have to take up the whole five minutes, but they are there for you should you need them. And lastly, after your presentation or you just say what's on your mind, sometimes we have questions of you, so if you linger at the podium for a moment, it gives me a chance to ask council members if they have questions for you. We just work through each item until everyone's had a chance to say what they want to say, and we understand what it is you want to say. We're polite and respectful at all times. And if you do have comments that you don't want to say out loud tonight, you can write them on a blue comment sheet at the back of chambers. If you leave that back there, they will be distributed to us before tomorrow legislative session, so they're right back there for you. And if you need any help, Ms. Merle, who sits right here, is happy to help you. So with that brief introduction, we will begin our work of the evening with item one, which is an ordinance amending Table 1 of the city code entitled "Speed Limits" by changing the speed limit in -- it says "various," but I think it should say "many" locations throughout the city. Mr. Silver.
Good evening.
A lot of background work went into this, so we're appreciative of that.
Yeah, thank you. The discussion that you have before you this evening, it does amend. It's a discussion to amend Table 1 of the city code of ordinances entitled "Speed Limits." It has two main goals. The first goal is to -- it's to confirm that the current posted speeds are appropriate and cited in the ordinance. And what that means is that there are several streets throughout the city that currently have speed limits that do not have the accompanying ordinance backing for that speed limit. So if a speed limit on a city street is not 25 miles an hour, it needs to be contained in the ordinances, and there are discrepancies between posted speeds and the speed that is contained in our ordinances. I'll get to the locations shortly. In all cases except for one, the posted speed is recommended to remain, and the ordinances are recommended to be amended to match the posted speed limit. There is one location on Truax Boulevard where the speed limit is posted at 35, and it's being recommended to be lowered to 30 based upon the results of our speed studies. The second goal of the ordinance before you is to clean up language revisions. There are streets that are no longer present; there are inconsistencies in the language based upon previous projects in the city and just in segmentation. And then also, a street name for our ordinances in some circumstances do not match what that street name is in our GIS system, and that -- our GIS system governs our addressing, 911 routes, emergency response, so we want to make sure that our ordinances match what the official record of that street is. So again, we're not changing street signs that you would see; this is just a paperwork revision to make sure that our ordinances are in order with what we're hoping to regulate. So for the first part of the ordinance revision, in these locations throughout the city -- and there is a table on page eight of your council handout -- where the posted speed limits on these routes, Craig Road, Gateway Drive, Harding Avenue, Highland Avenue, Moholt Drive, Star Avenue, Truax Boulevard, Airport Road, Oakwood Hills Parkway, Oakwood Hills Drive, or Oakwood Mall Drive, and then Old Wells Road, they have a posted speed limit that, when we conducted the speed study, and the results of the speed study are contained in your packet also, confirm that the posted speed that you see when you drive is the appropriate speed to travel that route. This is the section of Truax Boulevard out by Jeffers Road and 14th Street that, since the time the speed was originally established or was originally posted, there has been development and increase. There's been a trail along the north -- I think it's along the north side of Truax in this area. And development and infill in this area has caused the speed study to support having a 30 mile an hour speed limit. So as you come out of town, you transition to 30, and then you go to 35. So this is the only location where the actual speed limit signs that you would see as a motorist would be lowered. All other routes, the amendment proposes to bring the ordinances in line with the posted speed that you see. And I'll go -- are there any questions on this part, or -- or else I'll continue through the other part. The second goal of the ordinance revision or ordinance amendment deals with language revisions, and for these routes, it's to change the street name to match what the official name is in our GIS system and our addressing. On this combined continuous segments, on these routes, Eddy Lane has a section that goes from A to B, and then a section that goes from B to C, and they have the same speed limit. So to make our ordinances easier to read, if there are adjacent routes or adjacent blocks of the streets with the same speed limit, we're just combining those into one limit with a start and a stop. So instead of having two spots on Eddy Lane, there's one with the beginning and end point. And then these streets, 14th Street, this -- all of 14th Street is contained in the ordinances already, so this is no longer present. Jones Street is actually Lake Street on this side of the river; that is no longer a street. And then Harding Avenue and Star Avenue, they're referenced in Table 1 under two speed limits. So they're referenced, I believe, in the 30 and the 35 mile an hour speed limit parts of that table, and they're being removed to reflect out of one of those sections to remain in the section that is appropriate to match the speed limits that are posted. So just to summarize, it is to -- those areas throughout the city to help with enforcement if there is a challenge for an enforcement ticket, to have our ordinances match the posted speed limits. And then the second part is to try and clean up some of the ordinance language to be reflective of the current conditions out there.
Questions for Mr. Silver. Councilmember Bonn-Heaton?
On page 14 at the bottom, there's a Section 5, and it's got "speed limit increased to 55 miles per hour." The 5 is lightened down, and it's moved down to 50. I think it's supposed to be decreased instead of increased, or...
Yeah, we looked at that also, but the original ordinance that was passed -- and I have that here.
Or is that just duplicating what's in the previous ordinance?
Yeah, that's duplicating what was in the previous ordinance, but lowering it from 55 miles an hour to 50 miles an hour. So the original ordinance, and I have it printed out here, we weren't increasing it; we lowered the number. It could have been worded the same, I guess, differently, but the original language for this part of Section 5 of Table 1 says "speed limit increased to 55 miles an hour," and that was enacted in the early '90s. And it says 55 miles an hour, so we are lowering it to 50. So, I mean, it's a wording change, but instead of striking the whole Section 5, we just wanted to lower this 55 to 50. And that matches the speed limit on Hastings Way currently.
Councilmember Jean?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. So all the streets here, are they request by the citizens or just the city that want to change?
Well, what happened is we were requested by the Eastside Hill Neighborhood Association to look at Margaret Street for a speed limit study for that particular section. When we started looking at that section for a speed study and what the appropriate speed and whether it's 25 or 30, we got into the whole part of our ordinances that deal with speed limits, and it was pointed out for Margaret Street that Margaret Street was actually not regulated by a table in Table 1, so it should be 25 miles an hour, but it was posted at 30. So while we were in there dealing with Margaret Street, we noticed that there were a number of inconsistencies, and then once we noticed a few, we strove to try and correct as many as we could identify and hopefully have our table reflect what our current naming conventions are, what our current posted speed limits are, and so forth. So we have not, since the initial reading of this ordinance two weeks ago, we have not received any calls, nor prior to that did we have any requests from neighborhoods to adjust the ordinance or the speed limits for any of these roads.
Can I -- so you say that you have not received any call from citizens about the streets, or...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Silver. Are there any members of the public who came to speak to speed limit changes throughout the city and naming changes?
Jeremy Greggert at 451 Lincoln Avenue. Yeah, I guess, just taking a look at this new idea, I guess, about -- I know that the Margaret Street discussion was a great catalyst for this, so I appreciate the city looking into the issue. I was kind of hoping the city would be coming after looking at these different inconsistencies between the signage and the ordinance that it would go in the direction that ultimately was done, I believe, with Margaret, where it was decided to change the signage rather than change the ordinance to match the signs. It seems like our city in general should be following its own ordinances with its signage and -- instead of changing the ordinances to fit signage, I guess you could say. But I obviously understand, you know, some of these roads are a little different than -- sometimes 10 miles per hour difference. So there are a few things that I wanted to mention. I've been attending most of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission meetings and -- or committee meetings, and I don't think they actually discussed this topic or this specific project that I was working on before it came to you. So I think it would be a good idea to get the perspective of people who walk and bike and the impact that speeds do have on people when they're choosing to walk or bike or when they are finding the road to be accommodating to them. So I guess I'm not exactly sure what the speed study all entailed, but I'm not sure that it included the perspective of someone walking and biking in that area. It seemed like there was definitely some pedestrian considerations, though. I just haven't seen a lot of that. So I guess my general perception was that the city was actually going to move forward in the sense that, instead of having the ordinance match the botched signage, to correct the signage instead, as we saw in Margaret, though that is apparently not happening. So I wanted to just at least express my opinion on a few of the specific streets, one of them being Harding Avenue. I think that that one is signed at 35 and maybe in some places 30, but I think that one should be lowered to 30 in the ordinance. So this is an opportunity where the council could decide to do that, and there's other ones like MacArthur that are signed at 30 and also -- or actually, it doesn't say that it's signed for West MacArthur, but it's a situation where the ordinance says it's 30, but it's not signed. I think that one should be considered for 25 miles per hour because there have been pedestrian deaths on that stretch, and it's kind of within recent years, and it would be something to look at more comprehensively than I think this has done. I do want to put out a little chart here that I -- unfortunately, I couldn't print in color. I was at the library, and they don't have color printing over there, but this is just something to give some perspective on what this really means, these kind of -- this conversation, which I think I'm glad that the city is opening up at this point citywide. The impact that a person who's walking, you know, when a vehicle hits them, this is the -- generally, the survivability rate for different speed limits or for different speeds that a vehicle is moving at. So you can see that it's somewhat of an exponential change in the streets that we're talking about here, and this -- and these changes are exactly within this range that you see here. So it is a dramatic thing to discuss and to consider as a city, but I kind of hope the city slows down a little bit on this, and we can have the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee look at it, and the public can participate in that venue as well. So, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Greggert. I see no questions. Did anyone else come to speak about proposed changes? Seeing none, the chair will close. Item one, which brings our attention to item two on our agenda, an ordinance amending Chapter 13.10 of the code entitled "Street Excavations and Openings to Include Right-of-Way Use Regulations." Mr. Silver.
So this public discussion is on an ordinance that would amend Chapter 1310 of our Code of Ordinances for the City of Eau Claire. I'll read the summary background from the cover sheet, and then I'll just paraphrase really briefly what our goals were, and I'll go through the packet, add some information, and then answer questions at the end. But amendments to Chapter 1310 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Eau Claire propose to address safety and uniformity concerns with changing requests for use of right-of-way and structures being proposed within the right-of-way. City staff has received a continually increasing number of requests to install structures within the public right-of-way that create potential safety and welfare hazards to the public. The proposed ordinance creates a legal framework for permitting new use requests for right-of-way in a safe, fair, transparent, consistent, transparent, and responsible manner. The public right-of-way provides a limited space for all city and utility needs. The proposed ordinance will ensure new structures placed in the right-of-way will be safe for the public as well as ensure the right-of-way space remains available for use in the future as demand for use increases. So very simply, we have received requests in our office for structures to be located in the right-of-way, which are significantly larger than requests previously for surface Our current ordinances do not have any framework or language for guiding where those structures go, any restrictions based upon safety or location, whether it's residential, industrial, or commercial. They're simply silent, and we wanted to be able to provide a framework for requests of use of our right-of-way that would help guide the design of those structures in appropriate locations before they come to our office and provide a safe framework for where those structures should be located. The second goal of the ordinance that we were looking for is not to hamstring any of the operations of the utilities that we currently have within our right-of-way. We don't have a problem with large and dangerous structures currently. We have numerous electrical, telephone, and cable television facilities within our right-of-way. We did not want to enact an ordinance to guide future locations of above-ground structures while hamstringing the replacement and maintenance of the existing structures that we had. So we're trying to set a framework going forward while being able to maintain without adding cost or inconvenience to the existing structures that you would see throughout the city. So that's what our goal was with this, and I would like to thank the council for allowing us two extra weeks to work with our utility partners and to incorporate feedback into the ordinance that we're presenting. I think the ordinance is better because of the additional feedback that we were able to incorporate. So simply, the goals again are to protect the safety of the users of the right-of-way, provide a framework for new requests for use of right-of-way in fair and consistent, responsible manners, and then not hamstring the operations, maintenance, and replacement of in-kind structures and facilities within the right-of-way. So why are they being proposed? We want to control the structures and the locations of structures and excavations within the right-of-way to ensure that the right-of-way remains available for our public services and it's safe for use by motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists. We've -- not only us, but some of our peer communities and also the state have seen an increasing number of requests for large structures within the public right-of-way, including residential areas. We've received at least four requests for the City of Eau Claire in the last year for structures that are increasing -- that are approaching four feet in size and 120 to 30 feet in height. La Crosse recently had a request for 13 of these structures in La Crosse, and currently our ordinance language does not specify the appropriate locations for these structures. And then any kind of structure presents a risk to the public health, safety, and welfare if they're constructed in inappropriate locations, either for blocking sight distance for people using the right-of-way, hazards to strike if your car deviates from the street, or if you leave the sidewalk portion of the right-of-way on a bicycle, a structure presents a problem for that. So what are we proposing to change? We're proposing for new structures, again, not replacement in kind, that new structures need to be size and location requirements. There are height restrictions along routes that are typical for residential neighborhoods, and there are exemptions for light poles and in-kind replacement of existing structures. So if a neighborhood requested lighting and light poles provide, you know, a safety improvement for that neighborhood, they would not be subject to the restrictions of this ordinance. What doesn't change, our right-of-way is still available to accommodate use requests. Our right-of-way is the property of the City of Eau Claire; it's ours to regulate at the local level, so we will be -- we're proposing criteria for the use of that right-of-way, but the right-of-way is still available to accommodate use requests as they come in. Existing structures and facilities can be replaced in kind, so the existing poles, which are structures, can be replaced. Those facilities can be upgraded with current standards, meeting federal and state requirements and modern design standards. But if a proposal for a new large pole were to come into an area that is not considered in kind, a data tower 130 feet comes proposed in an area where there are already 30-foot electrical poles, then the ordinance would kick in with size requirements and location requirements for that structure. Underground utilities are not changed. Structures in private easements, where the utility companies have private easements or if they own land in fee title, would not be subject to the ordinance. So this is only for the right-of-way that the City of Eau Claire operates within its bounds. It's not for structures located on private properties or contained within easements. So what does that leave for being affected? New structures proposed within the right-of-way, not meeting exemption criteria outlined in the ordinance, would be subject to the ordinance. And I'll go through what the exemption criteria and what the requirements are after a few examples, and those are contained in the ordinance. So these are familiar examples of what would be exempted from the ordinance. We don't have a concern with these structures. They're data, electrical, small transmission -- transformer cabinets, markers for underground facilities, cable television pads. This is a traffic signal cabinet for a public works project for a traffic signal. These we do not have a concern with; we haven't had a problem in the past, so these would not be subject to the ordinance. These are examples of existing poles that are -- some are quite tall, electrical facilities, some have attachments. These all could be replaced in kind if they needed servicing. And if current standards and regulations governing the replacement of the poles and the type of service that they provide require the pole to be slightly taller or the arm to be slightly wider or four insulators instead of three, that would be considered in kind because it is replacing a service in kind as near as possible to still provide the service to the customers. It would not force these transmission -- electrical lines to be replaced underground. These are -- and I'll say, these are some structures that are larger for around town. None of these are what triggered our looking at the ordinance, our ways to at least establish criteria for safe inclusion, but these are all representative, with the exception, this is approaching 350 feet tall, so approximately half the height of the tower by South Middle School. These are all structures that, short of having guidance in our ordinance, we do not have a restriction in ordinance that would spell out where the appropriate locations for these to be placed in the right-of-way are. So we would -- we could deny a request, and it would be much easier to defend and restrict those if the ordinance is in place to guide where these -- where the appropriate locations would -- for these structures would be. And then real quickly going through the ordinance, the -- like I said, the existing ordinance largely governs street excavations and openings. It didn't govern additional use of the right-of-way, so we added the definition of light pole to make sure that they were exempted. And in the definition of "structure," the structure shall not include traffic control devices. They're defined as a box, pole, tower, or other thing placed installed in a street. They do not include traffic control devices or signs, public safety signs, newsstands, underground utilities, de minimis attachments to approved structures. I'll touch on that later because there is a new small cell technology to help with our cellular needs that small cell attachments are approved, attachments to existing structures within our right-of-way. And then it includes an exemption for two-feet-by-three-foot-by-four-feet-in-high structures outside of the clear zone. So those are intended to be the telephone and smaller structures that you see throughout the city. But largely, those structures are located off of right-of-way currently. So these are the exemptions, other than in kind, and then in kind we'll touch on below with the requirements. If we deny a permit, there is an appeal process to the Administrative Review Board under procedures in Chapter 1.06 of our code. It's an existing board; we didn't create a new board, but there would be the appeals process to that existing board if an applicant disagrees with our denial of that. board if an applicant disagrees with our denial of that, that permit. And then, in the regulations, basically, all structures other than those that are light poles or are in-kind replacement for structures on existing facilities shall be located at the height of the structure plus 10 feet exists between the structure and a building. So, if you have a 30-foot tall structure, it has to be 40 feet from a building. Structure shall be located and placed so not to restrict any line of sight, so it's vision triangles. And also, if there is another situation where we'd have pedestrians crossing and a structure would block that sight of that pedestrian or user of the right-of-way outside of a vision triangle. Working with our fire and emergency response folks from the city, all new structures shall be located a minimum of 22 feet from any building. That allows firefighting and other emergency services and municipal services better access to the building. Structure shall be a minimum of 10 feet from all right-of-way designated for pedestrians for that portion of the right-of-way, designated for pedestrians, sidewalks, and trails in resident, adjacent to residentially zoned properties. So, if there's a sidewalk in a residential area, a trail, the pole shall, or the structure shall be 10 feet from that portion of the right-of-way. In commercial and industrial areas, that restriction is relaxed for here, but it's still subject to the other sections of the ordinance. The structure shall comply with applicable state and build, state and city building codes. All, all applications shall include as an attachment a sworn statement from a professional engineer that the structures are designed to maintain structural integrity throughout all scenarios. This was one feature that we, we worked at with, with the utility companies, and what that means is oftentimes when you have plans, the standard specifications for containments in the plans, whether it be storm sewer pipe on our construction projects or anything, that design has been stamped by an engineer at some point to certify that that design has met certain safety criteria. So, it doesn't mean that every application we have, they have to hire an engineer to stamp and certify that, but if the design that they're submitting for a standard pole was designed by an engineer and most risk management protocols would establish that structures located in a public setting would be designed by an engineer, we just want some kind of certification that we could verify that, that pole was engineered, instead of having a substandard pole that could create, or a structure that could create a safety hazard. Structure shall not be placed in front of a dwelling, so that's in front of the actual dwelling, or in front of a business occupied, or a building occupied for business services. So, if they're in a dwelling, if there was a need for a fire or ambulance service, again, we would like the front of that building or dwelling to be unobstructed for emergency responses. Structure shall be located as to permit unencumbered access to city utilities or the location of anticipated future utilities. So, when we have our, our street construction projects, we work with the utilities currently to make sure that they don't locate a gas main over the top of our water main, if at all humanly possible. And then, for utilities, for anticipated future utilities, a good example of that would be recently, we built a trail from the end of the High Bridge up to Roosevelt Elementary. We knew there was going to be a storm sewer that would be located in the middle of that right-of-way that was purchased, that was originally railroad right-of-way. So, if a permit request came in, we know we're going to have a storm sewer through the middle of that at some point in the future. We would locate, the structures to be located off to the side from where we would expect that utility to be. And then, if the structure is in the form of a tower pole, tower pole that's 10 feet taller than an existing pole, so this would be an example if we have an existing electrical line or telephone line, and a pole that is not part of that existing structure requested to be located in that area, a cellular tower wants to come in where we have an existing distribution line, and it's significantly taller, greater than 10 feet taller than the existing poles that are there, we want them to submit to us why, basically, why does that pole have to be so much greater than the poles that are already in that corridor? Why they are not able to use the existing poles and cohabitate and make as best use out of the existing structures within the right-of-way? Or, and show that due to its height and size poses no greater danger to the health, safety, or welfare to the public than existing, than the existing poles that they will be located in. And then, for structures that do meet the location requirements, placed on streets that are classified as collector streets or local streets, as defined by the West Central Wisconsin Regional Painting Commission, we have a map that they publish. So, these are streets that are more typical of your neighborhoods. Poles that meet the location requirement shall be 40 feet in height or less. And then, the, all structures shall be located not contrary to public health, safety, or welfare. Those are the, the location requirements, and then, there is an amount of staff time that goes into the, into the review of the permits for structures that are required, that are permitted, that are requesting permits. So, we're requesting a fee of $200 to handle the initial review and inspection to establish if it is an appropriate and safe location. And then, to maintain and track and keep in our database, we propose a $20 fee for staff time and the portion of our GIS that would be involved with monitoring these structures. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
I'll see if I have any. Councilmember Will.
Thank you for the presentation. Did you get a good response from the other representatives that may be using or be a part of this?
We, we did hear from a number of utilities that use our, we did, yes. And there are some differences with some of the utilities. Some, I do have an email from one of the utilities that don't have any concerns with this. So, it's been mixed response. We tried to be, when we created this, we didn't want to create a problem where we don't have one with the existing structures and replacement of what we have, but we wanted to be mindful of, of protecting those rights of way. And in 1970, the city enacted an ordinance with relating to subdivisions as they were plotted for the city, so the utilities are underground in subdivision. So, 47 years ago, the city made the commitment to keep the right-of-way as free and clear as possible as the city expanded. The majority of these situations where this would kick in, they're, in neighborhoods, they're, they're protected by that subdivision restriction when those plats are accepted. So, in some of our older neighborhoods where the right-of-way is constrained, it's tight, there's, there's utilities that are, they're currently, we wanted to, to make sure that if we're adding more into there, that they're located at appropriate locations. So, anytime we go from having zero restrictions in our ordinance to having some, some pretty well-defined restrictions, you get feedback.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you. So, did I understand that, that this applies to any structure that is either above-ground or underground?
This is intended to apply to above-ground structures. So, if there was a vault, if there's a, you know, say, a four-by-four-by-eight underground electrical vault like we have in downtown here, this does not regulate the underground vaults. This is above-ground, this is intended to regulate above-ground structures, cabinets, towers, poles, boxes of that sort.
Thank you. So, did, the, if there's a disagreement or, or it has to, maybe there's a disagreement where to put it or whatever, it does not go to the plant commission? Did I see administrative review on that?
Correct. There is, there is an administrative review board So, right here in a, it consists of seven persons appointed and approved by the city council, and they should be residents, the City of Eau Claire having a two-year term, and then they have the meeting requirements for that. So, it's an existing board. That's the review process that we would have for the denial of a claim.
Thank you.
Or permit.
Councilmember Mitchell, thank you. I, I just really hate to be this picky, but if you're looking at the definition of structure, item K in the, under definitions, so a structure means anything placed, installed, or otherwise located, shouldn't it say on any city street? If it has to be on top?
The intent was above-ground, so if the definition needs to be revised, we'll look at it. But our intent wasn't, wasn't necessarily underground. It was more for above-ground, for, for falling on buildings, hitting them with your car, blocking sight distance and so forth. If it's underground, then that was not our intent, so duly noted with that.
In the category of being picky, item G, can one really expect that there would not be a structure in front of any dwelling? Do?
Well, this, this is not directly in front, so what we're hoping, if you have a, you know, 80-foot wide lot and your house is 60 feet wide, that those poles could be located towards your, your property lines instead of right, directly in front of where your front door would be. And a dwelling does not include a garage either, so if you're in the building, in your house, the part that you live in would be, is free for new structures to go in as possible. If a pole needs to be sited there, if there's an existing overhead electric line or telephone line, and with the current standards and they need to replace it, and that's where the design dictates that it has to go to meet their requirements and regulations, then that would be exempt because that would be an in-kind structure.
Okay.
So, this would be for a proliferation.
And the same in our commercial districts, you would try not to locate the pole, pole right outside the front?
Outside the front for the, for the same reasons.
Do all of the pole-type structures have wires, or some don't?
No, some, some don't. Some, some examples for a, an industry that is expanding the, the small cell, so this is an example of a pole that was required for one of their applications. This is what they're interested in, the small attachment on top, but there weren't a pole for them to attach onto, so they proposed a long pole. And we also had a request, and I don't have a picture, but it looks very similar to the monotube metallic poles that we have existing, and they don't have wires. It's just a data transmission pole.
So, we don't, so we've covered both our bases, I guess, or we've encompassing transmission uses, data and power?
That's what we're hoping for, yes. And for the attachments, small cell technology includes these small attachments that go on the top of poles and can be, and located wherever they can, and this, this is for the 5G network expansion, at least with this utility that provided feedback. These attachments are considered de minimis, so they're, they're allowed to attach to existing light poles, existing street lighting, electrical poles, you know, whatever existing structures are within the right-of-way, these attachments aren't regulated if they're, if they're de minimis. If it's a, a 10-foot globe or dish on top of it, then it's not considered de minimis, and then the ordinance would kick in. If there is no place within the public right-of-way to attach a pole like this in a downtown area, this carrier had concerns in our downtown area where locations of poles are difficult by design because we have a very constrained right-of-way, and we have a number of pedestrian usages plus street lighting usages, they either have to attach to a, get a private easement to attach to a building in downtown, like at this location, or they have to seek to put another pole to attach that structure to. So, if they need to, if there's a new pole that's not part of an existing line or an existing facility, then this pole would be subject to the ordinance to be located at an appropriate location.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember T. Walton.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. I've got a couple of questions, if that's okay. Did you, I assume Excel is our major power carrier for citizens. Did they have any objections that?
I believe you'll receive some feedback after I'm done with my presentation. We did work extensively with Excel. I think we have the majority of, of the concerns satisfied in the ordinance, but I think there are still a couple of areas of disagreement with the proposed ordinance. But I, I think the areas of disagreement are minor compared to the overall goal that we're trying to achieve with citing these poles in appropriate locations or structures accordingly.
Maybe a total of three it'll be. Define the public right-of-way. How many feet is that in front?
It varies. It's contained in our property record system, our GIS system, and include, it comes in with our plats, CSMs, but that's a portion of land, basically, that the city owns for, in essence, the public good. It's for streets, sidewalks, our utilities. It's not a private parcel. It's different from having a vacant lot along Main Street where a house, we maybe got a house for tax purposes. It's a continuous piece of land for which our infrastructure is located.
And I guess my major question is just the concern and the technical nuances of different infrastructures. We have data, we have power. When you say, well, we'd not want it in front of the building, a large commercial building can span a great distance. When that happens, I know with the building I work at, our electrical came in one corner and then we grew the building. Now, we can't get power down to the other end because of the type of power we're carrying. So, are we now bringing another distribution had it been center-located? So, there are different technologies that may dictate where the best place is, and it may be in front, not perhaps the front door, but somewhere. The corners are not always ideal. And so, I'm just kind of worried if we're stating something that will block a technology, we've got digital technology to have access to people, we're going to be wireless in a couple of years, and so I'm just kind of wondering how those state and federal guidelines keep us safe from making ordinances that make things impossible to add to the area.
This ordinance, by design, does not make it easier to add poles or structures within the right-of-way, so new poles that aren't replacement. So, in that instance, in that circumstance, it may be required for the utility to go underground, and it may be appropriate for the utility for that stretch to go underground if an accessible, if any appropriate location for that utility isn't, or that, for that pole to be sited. It may be required, it may be appropriate for the utility to grant, to gain a private easement for that structure along that property as well. So, that's what's difficult with trying to accomplish a goal for the city. There will be circumstances where if there is not an above-ground facility on a route that they may have to go underground because of that ordinance, and that is by design for this ordinance, because any above-ground structure is a hazard, and the city made that commitment 47 years ago with new sub, new plats. And also, if this tower were located on public, or on private property, it would need a conditional use permit. So, they made the commitment for everywhere except for our right-of-way to have requirements to appropriately locate poles.
Just one follow. While true, 47 years ago, cellular technology, digital technology, so if something to give an area connection to the, to the network that we all thrive on, needed a tower, then they would not, and they certainly can't put that, that's not an underground technology. So, it could be possible that an area of town could be blocked from having access, and then they would not be able to connect to the net or whatever it might be as the technologies move.
In some circumstances, it may be appropriate to purchase a private easement for that facility.
If, if one such is possible to purchase.
I think, I think by and large, the majority of the structures, you know, especially with a small cell, they would be able to find a location. The downtown area for putting new poles, it's going to be difficult to find new places to put poles where they don't exist currently. That's why we're working with them to attach to our existing poles if necessary. And our electric is down, is underground in downtown anyway, because it's not appropriate to have those poles.
It's a different technology then, yeah.
So, yeah, I, we, we acknowledge that there may So, yeah, we acknowledge that there may be situations where private easements may be necessary or private purchase, but by and large, we feel confident that the majority of requests can be satisfied with appropriate citing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see no further questions, but I know that we do have people who want to speak tonight. In my introduction, I failed to mention that after you approach the podium, please begin your comments by stating your name and your address for the public record. Just forgot to say that.
My name's B.J. Rockman. I live at 3505 Damon Street in the City of Eau Claire. I work for XL Energy. Unfortunately, we are not the utility that didn't express concerns about the, about the new ordinance. My title is Senior Director for Electric and Gas Distribution Operations in Wisconsin. So I appreciate you allowing me to address the council tonight. We've, Mr. Solberg, we very much appreciate the opportunity we've had over the last two weeks to have dialogue with he and his staff. We've been able to resolve some of the concerns that we have, but I wanted to bring to your attention some of the other concerns that we have, that we've not been able to address. Basically, I've got three primary concerns. The first of which is in regards to what we feel is a definition that should be included in the, in the ordinance. As you can see in the top there, 1310, that, in the opening of section 1310065, the ordinance talks about in-kind replacement for a structure in an existing service corridor. It's our opinion at XL that in-kind could be left to varying interpretation. In our discussion with the city engineering staff, the staff has taken a very pragmatic approach to what that means per our discussion, and it certainly seems to agree in many ways with what we've proposed in the definition included in the sheet in front of you and what we had proposed also to staff, the engineering staff. Unfortunately, with there not being a specific definition of the term including the ordinance, we're concerned that future staff may not take that same pragmatic approach as existing staff has. Secondly, some of the wording in 1310065 in regulations governing structures, we feel is overly restrictive in that it doesn't seem to allow for changes that may be necessary as a result of industry standards. The wording doesn't touch on industry standards. We've proposed some wording that does. Section E, let's see, section E in 1310065 mentions compliance with state and city of Eau Claire building codes and electric codes. And as per the second talking point here in the sheet that I've provided, we feel that it's critical to include language that allows for any changes in compliance with industry standards, such as the National Electric Safety Code, or NESC. Quite often, our designs that we do at XL Energy are dictated by those national industry In addition, we're opposed to section two in the ordinance, which allows for an annual fee of $20 for installation of each new structure. We question what the annual fee is related to and feel that permit fees need to be reasonable and should relate to work actually done by the city. In this case, that could be related to inspections of the structures in question or something completely unrelated. Mr. Solberg mentioned maintenance of, I think, the GIS database. That would be an example of what that $20 would be used for on an annual basis. But when you're talking about per structure, we could have numerous poles, obviously, in a pole line. So in this case, again, I thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you. Appreciate your time and consideration of your concerns, and I'm more than willing to try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rockman? Oh, Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Council President. In relation to everything else that was discussed and being proposed with this, these changes, are you comfortable with?
Yes, sir, we are. We've had, we had some of the same concerns with structures in front of residences, and truly, we hadn't thought about as a, as a business expands that that pole would be in front of a, in front of an expanded building. So I would say that's a concern, that would be a concern of ours that we didn't consider. So it's certainly not one that we talked about with staff, but if we had the opportunity, we'd probably readdress that. And to the point that that may have to go underground, so the extension of the service may have to go underground, we, we think that the ordinance, as it's written, is going to mean that a lot of new services are going to go underground. A lot of new extensions may have to go underground. And I, we're accepting of that, but I think that we would be remiss in not saying that by going underground, that adds to the cost to our customers. Yes, sir.
Councilmember, did you have a question? Clint Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Rockman. How many installations do you usually have over a year?
That's a great question. I would say new installations...
Or re-installation?
New installations are replacements in kind, I guess I should ask.
I'm going to refer to it as an initial installation, so it would not be a replacement.
So I would say less than a dozen typically.
There may be other questions, but I have a question of our city attorney for a moment. And maybe for Mistress Solberg. In that section two, reflect an initial installation of $200 and an annual fee of $20. Is that for all installations that they have, or just new ones going in from the time this is passed going forward?
The new ones that would be subject to this ordinance. So replacement in kind wouldn't be subject to this fee. And those telephone pads, those small structures that are underneath that two-by-three-by-four size zone would not be subject to this. So this would be for, if we had a large structure that met the criteria in this, to be installed, although restrictive, it would be for those.
The chair will allow herself a question also regarding the fees. In such that the $20 covers, I guess, administrative expenses, I guess, do you foresee, or have you contemplated a, some sort of initial fee that may last over time, so we don't have to do the annual fee, or I think it's proposed at $200?
Yeah, I think we were, we had discussed the installation fee of $200, and we did not have an issue with that.
Okay. Were you saying that maybe we should just charge a fee if we need to inspect, or we always need to inspect the installation?
Yeah, my point would be, and typically, we do our own inspection of poles. So it was more of a question, what is the city charging that fee for? And that was an example that came to mind for us, that the city might be taking it upon themselves to inspect poles, but we certainly don't need that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we appreciate your input. May have some more questions later, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else here to talk about, anyone else about these proposed changes? I see no, I see no other people willing or requesting to speak, so did you still have a question for Mr. Rockman?
No, I just want for Mr. Solberg.
Okay. Councilmember Van Heden?
The question would be, is the first two items here that are in here, are these problematic to being incorporated in there in the definitions? Without my going through and rereading this, I have no way of knowing. You can give us a, or if you would research and let us know tomorrow how that would fit in, I would appreciate it. You don't have to answer it now.
Sure. We'll have an answer before tomorrow's meeting for you.
Okay. That's what I appreciate.
Particularly, what do the industry standards mean? What does that mean?
We will.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, then we will close that item. We do have a decision point tomorrow at our legislative session. That brings us to item three on our agenda, which is a presentation on the proposed Eau Claire Veterans Tribute Foundation Veterans Tribute Trail on the Forest Street Greenway. Mr. Preyminger?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Veterans Tribute Foundation desire to jointly develop a veterans tribute trail on land located in the Forest Street Green area. The green area that we're referring to is on Forest Street would be north of Madison Street, east of Forest Street, or west of Forest Street, east of the Chippa River, and just to the south of the central maintenance facility. This project would be an appropriate way to honor veterans in the Eau Claire community. The addition of a veterans tribute trail would also be beneficial to the community by creating new attributes and amenities within the park. The Community Services Department has been working with the Eau Claire Veterans Tribute Foundation in developing memorandum of understanding, which outlines the terms of the agreement reached between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Veterans Tribute Foundation, including capital fundraising, requirements, project construction timeline, maintenance funds, and responsibilities of the group. The group has also met with the North Riverside Neighborhood Association in February to discuss this project with them and to let them know that they will be working with them. In fact, we, in the recitals of the MOU, we place some wording in there that that would be something that would be agreeable with both groups. It is necessary for the foundation to raise money to entirely fund the project. The foundation shall lead a fundraising campaign to obtain donations totaling $2 million. The project would start construction in 2019, which would coincide with our plan to actually connect the trails from the High Bridge down to the existing trail that would connect to Phoenix Park. Mr. Mark Beckfield and Mr. Tim Moore are here to give a short presentation to give you an idea of what, conceptually, what it would look like. Okay?
Good evening, council persons. Madam Chair, and council. I'd like to recognize a couple people that are here tonight that are, I noticed, are in the crowd. Of course, there's Mr. Tim Moore, who is the Veterans Service Representative for Eau Claire County, has joined me this evening. In the back is Mr. Dan Ziegler, who is a liaison for the veterans organizations. There are 13 of them in Eau Claire. And newly elected to the United Council of Veterans is Mr. Joe Heil. You still back there, Joe?
Yep.
There you are. Thank you, Joe. First, I'd like to say thank you. We have a very professional staff that we've been working with, and they've been giving us good guidance and suggestions. And I will tell you that this project has been long in the making, and hopefully, we'll get past the concepts into the construction phases in the not-too-distant future. I'd first like to, if you can put that back up there, it would help me hear it a little bit. The idea is, if you were out today and you saw, if you've ever been to Washington, D.C., let's put it that way, and you've seen the cherry blossoms, for example, this time of year, what we'd be looking at is some type of flowering tree, like a crab apple or something of that, lining a straight-line trail that would be lined with these type of trees. And this time of year, if you go outside, it'd be a beautiful thing to see. The idea of it would be similar to what that drawing transition is, starting at one end, on the southern end, going forward all the way to what we call a mall area. It is part of the pedestrian bike trail, which we're all familiar with, but a lot of people ask, you know, is this a unique trail? No, it is part of it, and it all will be contained inside the city right-of-way. Even though we are having contact with FEMA, going through a number of little things, but we haven't had to cross that bridge at any time, because the right-of-way is the city's. So trying to avoid those issues, if at all possible, is one of the things that was suggested by staff. The veterans trail is, we've contacted many organizations. We're in discussions with a lot of different people. We will be discussing meeting with XL Energy, who's on that one end of the property. The Neighborhood Association, and of course, the gardeners were made aware that we are looking into the possibilities of putting a trail in there in their meeting in February, which was mentioned early. We will listen to all parties in regards to this, and we're really wanting to make this a positive experience for Eau Claire County and city. How did this get started? Well, in 2014, if you remember, the Veterans Day situation at Memorial High School, they were not allowed on the property at that time to do their services, and the years prior has have been held at Regis High School. And the answer at that time was to go to Burger King. Eau Claire County Board, which I am a member of, had a long discussion and said, this is a huge oversight, and we need to look into what we can do to correct the situation and make it a positive. So I was asked if I would look into the situation, and my first meeting was with the Patriotic Council, which is the group that handles the education and the Veterans Day, and also the parades and things in Eau Claire, which you're quite familiar with. Listening to them, I got three things out of. You can remember these three letters, H, E, and R. The H stands for honoring the flag. The E stands for educating their youth, and the R stands for remembering the rich history and that freedom is not free. Everybody get your little thing, little package yet? I guess not. Here you go. Don't say I didn't bring you anything. And then there's an O in there I'd like to talk about, for hero, because how I remember things is trying to remember acronyms, because as we get older, we tend to lose, you know, a few of those brain cells. Anyway, so hero is there. At the north end of the trail will be a large mall area with flags. The American flag, surrounded by each branch of the service, including the merchant Marines. One of the things that'll also be there will be what are called honor stones, in which are stones that you can purchase to put your family member or your business or something in that area. They'll recognize organizations, vets, and donors. That's the H. Education is, the students, I can see students' busloads going down there to learn about our veterans. How many, one of the questions out there, how many students do they have a smartphone? Every one of them, okay? So I'm going to go through a little story here, and it's going to be real short, but can you imagine a plaque that would start out with this Indian by the name of Skye? He is Chief Skye. And he met a man by the name of Daniel McCain in 1861. This gentleman had an eagle, and that eagle was purchased by the other gentleman, Mr. McCann, for a bushel of corn. He then brought that to Eau Claire, and he sold it to the servicemen going off to battle in the Civil War for $2.50, and the soldiers collected quarters for the bird. They then gathered together, and from Eau Claire, just down the road here, they hopped on a barge and went off to Civil War. Okay? And by the way, there may be a quarter in your pocket right now. If you open that little, if you don't have one, flip it over, on the back of that quarter is why there is an eagle on the back of that. And there's the picture of the actual bird. His name was Abe. And for those of you at Memorial High School, you know that that is your mascot. So sharing that tonight is the Eighth Wisconsin Volunteer Infantry Regiment was originally called the Badger Brigade, but was changed over to the Eagle Brigade, and it was one of the most decorated... but was changed over to the Eagle Brigade, and it was one of the most decorated services in the Civil War. My point tonight is, old Abe is everywhere. Memorial High School, Camp Rattle Stadium, Vicksburg, and Gettysburg. Not only, he's in the chambers of the Wisconsin Assembly, and it started right here in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. And there's the quarter, if you flip it over, that you learned. Now, to read that on a plaque would be rather cumbersome for a bunch of students. Remember, we talked about their cellphone. They'll be able to walk up to that plaque, click on it, and the story will read to them. And that would go from era to era, starting with the Civil War, and it would go up through all the subsequent wars, up the park, straight up the road. R is for remembering the rich history. The freedom doesn't come free. And to honor the past, today, and the future veterans. There's a big difference between a memorial and a tribute, and I hope you all understand the difference. But we have a memorial bridge, we have Memorial High School, we have Memorial, a lot of stuff, but we need a tribute. If you go into other communities, let's take Fall Creek, Augusta, Bloomer, Hallie, they all have small tributes. Eau Claire is one, if you really think about it. We do not have one. We have a memorial in front of the courthouse with most of the names of the people who have fallen at war. But that's a memorial, and it's very small. There is no gathering space. One of them, I was recently talking to convention people, and one of the best conventions you can have come to your town is veterans conventions. Okay? And currently, we do not qualify, because we do not have an honor spot specifically put for that purpose, nor an area large enough to service hundreds of veterans to come to Eau Claire. So, this would solve that problem as well. Again, bus trips, QR codes, the feeling of the park is going to be very similar to, or at least the concept is, very similar to the quality of Phoenix Park to the south. So, it'll be an extension of that area. Okay? The site drawings, we have rough ideas at this point. They're getting close. We're going to be working with staff. This will be a staff project, is my understanding, right, Jeff? You're somewhere on there. Right? The architectural designs have been 100% donated, and one of the things I want to say is the amount of public outcry and support for this project is phenomenal. Okay? I don't want to tell you where we're at today, but it far exceeds what I ever thought would happen. The infrastructure and utilities issues, and you know, engineering costs a lot of money, and that coverage is already handled, that expense. And we want to say thank you to Lennon Peterson Architects for doing that for us. Also, since we're getting closer to the conceptual thing two and a half years later, we move forward with a 503C to collect money for the veterans tribute. And it was approved, it was set up by the Honorable Brian Wright, who's an attorney here in town, and he has done that, and he also will be retained as our attorney going forward. He has worked with Steve Nicaretti on the MOU, which we have already agreed to, and we're signing, and that should be in place, and I hope you got it, Steve, soon. Okay? So, thank you for all that work. The O on hero is the opportunity to say thank you to our veterans in a way that'll be meaningful long after we're gone. And I think that's what we need to do. So, with that, I want to say to you your questions.
Questions for Mr. Beckfield. Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. There was a map, a colored map, during Mr. Pippincher's presentation. Can we put that back up?
Right here.
Wonderful. So, either of you, maybe you can answer. I don't know if these plans are finalized, but it looks like the trail is going straight through the garden that exists there. Is that accurate?
Actually, this is conceptual.
Okay.
And what Mr. Beckfield was referring to on the right-of-way, I saw some eyes kind of spark up here. There used to be a road, if some of you remember, it used to call River Street in the past, and went through here. So, we got a right-of-way that runs through, that went all the way to William Street and came through. So, when we took all the homes, when we purchased the homes through this area that were in the floodplain, that right-of-way remained. And that was being referred to. And that, working with FEMA, if we can come down through there, it makes putting in the trail much more acceptable to FEMA, to bring it through a floodplain area.
I have a follow-up. So, that was actually my second question, whether the plans for pavement were approved by FEMA. I know that the garden there has had some issues with pavement in that area, being a floodplain. Has that been approved yet, or is it still in the works?
Has not been approved, still in the works. And one of the requirements bringing through this, these are going to have to be pervious pavers coming through, because it is in a floodplain. If it was impervious, it wouldn't let things percolate and infiltrate through.
It's also wider than the regular trail?
Right. To meet our standards for the trails, we're going to have the trail to be matching our trail width of 12 feet.
Which isn't a problem for us. Again, that drawing I've never seen before this evening, to be very honest with you. The one we have is a straight line right down the alleyway that was there before.
Thank you. Councilmember Van Heden.
Yeah, just following up on that. Now, the structures you're talking about putting in there, what are the problems with FEMA with those? You know, I know there was some question when they put the little park pavilion, but is there any problem with those getting approval, or where does that stand?
Well, we are in discussions with FEMA. If we're in the right-of-way of that property, they have no issues with it. The only difference, talk about a square peg in a round hole, is in Phoenix Park, for example, you have square light posts at the bottom. FEMA would require they be round, so that water could pass. So, there are a number of little details that still have to be crossed. So, the ones will be a little different on the north side of the road than the south side, because we need to do it the way that FEMA would like it done if we go onto FEMA property. So...
Okay. Thank you.
I'm ready for any question. I'll tell you, I've had millions of them asked of me.
I see no further questions from us right now. Oh, Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your presentation and the enthusiasm on this project for our community.
Thank you.
I have family members who have served or, and are currently serving, so the service has been appreciated for many decades, so thank you. My question is in regards to a letter that council received, and it looks like you were CC'd on the letter, from the Phoenix Park, the Forest Street gardeners. And I think the gist of the letter gets to kind of collaboration on the project, and the gardeners seem like they have some concerns about input on the project, including the design, the plantings that would be maybe complementary to the goals of gardening, chemicals potentially being used. They have a list of ten items here. Can you talk to us a little bit about the engagement process with the gardener group that's been there for many years, and what that looks like?
Well, of course. And we do want to work with all of the people, veterans included, the bikers included, pedestrians included. There are over 200,000 people use the bike trail, unique, according to the convention and Visitors Bureau as well. So, we need to listen to them as well. And some of the questions, first one you might ask is, they talked about pesticides. We don't take care of the trees. That would be handled by the city. And from the meeting we had the other night, my understanding is they do not use pesticides on those trees that would impact them. They're, the trees that we're looking at are not high, they're not the 40 to 50. They're a lower-profile tree. You know, most ornamentals are less than 20 feet, so the shade issue is not as great. And again, we've not laid out all of the details of the 13 locations of things, nor the monuments have not been picked out, the pervious stones and things. If you have specific questions, I did read it, I can't remember all of them in place. I've had people from the neighborhood talking about wanting no lighting to lots of light, so they feel safe. We talked to the Eau Claire Police Department about the lighting issue down there. They would like to see more light, because, and they also would like to see that the greenery be trimmed up to a level so they can sweep it with their police lights at night. So, we've also talked to the Eau Claire Police Department about these issues. There are a number of people, have a number of issues, and I'm going to address every one of those. I wish I could tell you what type of tree, and exactly how high it's going to get, and what color those trees would be, but at this point, we're not far enough down the trail to get there. We just got approved as a 503C four weeks ago, that we can go forward with that. And we plan on coming back to Parks and Waters, I believe it's called, again. And also, we'll be back in front of you with final plans when it's all completed. And yes, we will, as it says in the MOU that has been corrected, we will work closely with the gardeners, and they're the only one specifically that's named in that. But I will tell you, there's veterans as well, want to be closely put into bikers organizations. You know, other groups I can think off the top of my head, but we want to be respectful to everybody. I want to make one other thing perfectly clear tonight. I am not a veteran. This is a project I think we, as citizens of Eau Claire and Eau Claire County, need to do, and we need to work together to get it done correctly. And there were controversies with Phoenix Park as well, and we worked, I mean, the city worked through it. And I believe those we can answer. If there's anything specifically you'd like me to answer, I'd be happy to do that, Catherine.
I think I can do a follow-up with our city staff once we're done with this round here.
I hope I answered your question as about, you know...
Thank you, Mr. Beckfield. Oh, okay. Councilmember Beaton has another question.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Emanuel's question sparked a question of my own.
Okay.
And I think that there might be some people in the audience wondering this too. Specifically, because the garden is unique to those group, those other very important groups that you mentioned, it's unique in that it's been long established in this very location. And it's one, it's our most active garden in the entire city with, you know, ten, many, many members. I can't, I can't estimate accurately how many. There would be a lot of people there who have used the space for years to grow food that they can trust. And since I think that that's a unique situation, my question is, how specifically do you plan to engage gardeners and the garden there? How will you talk to them and make sure that your plans are going to be cohesive with their plans moving forward?
Well, I see Tammy Schlofnagels here this evening, and we already have another meeting set up with them. I asked to speak to them earlier, but it had a conflict with another meeting with the Eau Claire County, which I was unable to make. We intend on meeting with them again. And I can't, I can't tell you how much we appreciate the input that they have, because we're going to have gardens as well. And we've been talking about cross-pollination. We had one gentleman who wants to put beehives down there. That's going to be your issue, I'm afraid. You know, those type of things that will complement the gardens in that as well, and which we're looking to do. We think everybody can live together and make a heck of a nice area, because it could use a facelift if you walk through there. You know, one way or the other, trail's going through. You know, either it'd be the bike trail, or it's going to be a veterans-themed trail. You know, but we'd like to make it that way, because I think it also is a win for the city, in that a lot of the cost will be upgrading the parking lots, will be doing the paving, saving a lot of cost for the city. But that's not the reason we're doing it. We're doing it to make it a project everybody can be proud of. And, you know, people ask me what the monuments look like. I don't know at this time. I hope to bring that back to all of you sometime in July or August when we get a little. But we have 12 committees, all the way from historical fact-finding, all the way through to, I'm trying to think of them all, engineering, architectural, promotional, capital campaign. There's a, there's a large group of people. I'm just one person who's been there, and I've been through this type of campaign before. And I can tell you that I believe this one is going to be big, and it's going to be a success, because I can just feel the energy in our community for this.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
You bet.
Thank you. I see no further questions tonight. Are there other people from the public who wish to speak to this idea?
Good evening. I'm Joe Heil. I live at 1231 Rose Street, north side of town. I've been before this council quite often when we had our veterans programs. I'm hoping, I'm also chairman of the Eau Claire Veterans Council. I just acquired that position about a couple of weeks ago, so I'm trying to fill big shoes. I'm hoping that I can express how some of our veterans feel about this project. Again, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk with you regarding the veterans tributes of Eau Claire County. Looking around to other counties, cities, and our areas, you may find communities that have paid tribute to their veterans with pride. It is time that we in Eau Claire and Eau Claire County do the same. We need to honor our county veterans, both men and women, who have proudly served to protect our freedom from the Civil War to our present conflicts of today. There is no better way to show our support for this tribute. My understanding that Eau Claire has a great history that started with the Civil War, and need to make all of this information available to all our people who will visit this tribute, especially our children, because they need to carry that tribute on. My guess is that many of you have relatives who have served in the past to protect our freedom, rights. You will honor these and all veterans who have served Eau Claire and Eau Claire County. I've been a resident of Eau Claire for about 30-plus years. I've kind of made Eau Claire my home, even though I was born and raised in Marathon County, and that's where I entered my service. But Eau Claire has been great for me and my family. I've raised three boys here. My second son is an Iraqi veteran, and I'm very proud of what he's did. So, again, we need to honor our veterans, both men and women, with this tribute. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Heil. Other people came to speak on the tribute?
My name is Chuck Gable. I live at 1132 Pershing Street. We're one, my wife and I are one of the gardeners down there, and we think that that space is good as a park, and what the veterans want to do would fit into what my father-in-law, who survived the Bataan Death March, would have liked. I suggest that we all get together and talk about it before we come back and talk to you. There are things like if you have streets of cherry trees next to a garden, it doesn't work very well. There might be cherry trees on one side, there might be all sorts of things, but I think the groups are close enough to discuss everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. And anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Dan Ziegler. I'm at 1026 East Madison Street. This might be a little redundant, but I think it's important to be said. I want to thank this governing body for considering the Eau Claire County Veterans Tribute Project for development. This area has a very long history of its sons and daughters, serving our country in both peacetime and war. From past, present, and future conflicts, and yes, future conflicts, their sacrifice has held our country together and kept us free. So, it's right and just that we finally recognize that sacrifice, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Okay?
Good evening. My name is Bob Andrewskevich. I live at 1429 Drummond Street in Eau Claire, and I'm one of the gardeners of the Forest Street Garden. And I know most of the gardeners there really support the veterans, and we want to see this happen. We do have some concerns that I think will be addressed in other discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Hi, councilmembers. Tammy Schrofnagle, Neighborhood Association Chair for the North Riverfronts Neighborhood Association, and I happen to be privileged to be the county board representative for that area, as well as the Gables who are here today. that area, as well as the Gables who are here today, they, up in the Mount Simon area. We've been working with Mark for about five months now, talking about possibilities with the trail, and possibilities with the gardens, and engaging citizens down at the green space. And we can't think of anything that would be a better extension from Phoenix Park over to the city shops and to the High Bridge. And we are working with the gardeners, the neighbors, the veterans, and any planners who want to get involved as this thing is moving forward. We had an organizational meeting, I think on February 8th, and we had about 20 people. A lot of the questions that Catherine you addressed came up that night. And as Mark has said, we have a lot, it's a moving project, and it is an inspirational project. And we're really hoping that the North Riverfronts Neighborhood has a super positive stamp on citizens and veterans from around the city, state, and country, if there are chances of having tourism and some sort of other get-togethers on the bigger scale. I'm sorry, I'm stumbling here. But we support the project and look forward to working with you all as it is unfolded.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Supervisor Schrofnagle. Were you the one who sent the letter to the city?
No, that came from the gardeners.
Okay. Do you have any concerns with the city moving forward without any amendments on engagement with the neighborhood or the gardeners?
Mark and I talked briefly before this meeting, and I said that we're in the middle as a neighborhood of doing our neighborhood plan. And after we get together with the Planning Commission on June 5th, I want to get together with the neighborhood, the gardeners, the vets, again, and have a big discussion on where things are moving. And beyond that as well.
So to summarize, if the council move forward tomorrow without amending and adding additional language for engagement, you would be in support of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schrofnagle. Right now it says parties. So we'll have to decide if we want to list them or not. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much for your public input tonight. That does bring to an end the public portion of the meeting.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Quin Hammer?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Tebow?
Here.
Don Hayden?
Well?
Here.
Worthington?
Here.
John?
And thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 9th Legislative Session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this responsibility by working with citizens and collaborating with staff, reading the considerable amount of materials in our packets. We do arrive this afternoon ready to exercise our duty. And we welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers tonight, and those of you who might be viewing or streaming compliments, or not compliments, but with gratitude to community television for doing so. We have important items on our agenda this afternoon. Just a quick reminder to council that we will be adjourning to a work session after our public portion is done, which will be in the north conference room, right? Yes, okay. So in case you have dinner plans, you know, adjust them. So let's get going with our agenda, which begins with the consent agenda, items one through 12. Councilmembers have questions or wish to remove an item? On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Quin Hammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tebow?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. We do have four proclamations this afternoon, therefore the full chambers, and we will begin by asking Ray French to meet me at the podium.
Are you, are you the?
Yes. I will recognize a number of people, too.
Okay. All of those people out there?
Not everybody.
Okay. But they don't want to come up?
Well, if they could. No, this is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have the pleasure, starting out today, to recognize two activities in our community that develop our economy. We're going to, which is sometimes a little-known work, economic development, doesn't get, I don't know, doesn't get the kudos it deserves. So I'm very glad each year that we get to highlight some very important activities of your department. And I begin with this proclamation. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is celebrating its 91st anniversary as it provides leadership and excellence serving economic developers with conferences, training, research, public policy, advocacy. And the city of Eau Claire recognizes that economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life in their communities, and help create, retain, and expand jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. They stimulate and incubate entrepreneurs in order to establish the next generation of business. Therefore, the city council does proclaim the week of May 7th through the 13th Economic Development Week. Mr. French, who is the Business Assistant Specialist in the Economic Development Division. Mr. French?
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate the proclamation and want to acknowledge all of our partners who are able to be here. We couldn't do what we do without them, so if you wouldn't mind standing when you get your name called. First, from the Eau Claire Area Economic Development Corporation, Luke Hanson, Christina Wasson, and Beryl Willett. West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, Lynn Nelson. Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Heather Smith. Western Dairyland Business Centers, Jacob Haupt. Excel Energy, Dave Donovan. And in our department, we have Mike Schatz, Economic Development Director for the city of Eau Claire, Amy Kalman, Economic Development Clerk, Kieran Hamel, our Communications Promotions Coordinator for Downtown Eau Claire, and Dustin Zebrow, our Economic Development Intern. And that's who we have today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, here's your proclamation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, too. I didn't mean to imply that, well, you kind of are unsung heroes and heroes, so we gave you a little boost there. And you have a whole week of Economic Development Week activities. Is that right now?
Correct, yes.
Did you want to mention this?
Well, sure, there is.
There's a whole week of activities. This week, supporting economic development and all the different activities there are, highlighting various areas from industrial development to entrepreneur support services. There is, it's all over social media on Facebook, it's on the EDC's website, is the whole schedule of events, so please take a second and check that out. We hope to see you there, at any of them. Thank you.
Thanks again, Mr. French. Okay. Now we get to celebrate the creative economy and ask Mr. Kieran Hamel to come to the podium. Mr. Hamel is the Downtown Communication Coordinator for the Eau Claire Economic Development Division. And, so, our proclamation goes thus. The city of Eau Claire recognizes that investment in creative economy, economic, in creative economic development and the arts is important to the health and vibrancy of the community and its future. The city of Eau Claire appreciates that creative economic development and community cultural engagement are directly related to vitality and education for the 21st century, engage residents and a community futures, community's future success. The city of Eau Claire celebrates many impressive creative economy activities, projects, and initiatives. Education programs at art centers, revitalization, civic engagement are happening in communities across the straight, street, the state, and the street, probably, during Creative Economy Week. The city recognizes that investment in the creative economy is critical for success for these reasons. The arts mean business. The arts add to the economy. The arts engage. The arts drive tourism and are an export industry. The arts spark creativity and innovation, and the arts have social impact. Now, therefore, the city council gladly does proclaim the week of May 13th through the 20th as Creative Economy Week. Mr. Hamel?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're, as most of you know, Eau Claire has really chosen the creative economy as a path that is really going to drive us, whether that's music, or performing arts, visual arts, literature, the food and beverage industry, creative tech. There's a lot of these industries that are growing more and more, and it's thanks to a lot of the great people that are moving to this town, and a lot of the direction from city council as well, and the city staff. So thank you for that. We do have a big week planned, this is next week. We're kicking it off with a large panel discussion on Saturday, talking about our creative economy, where we are, where we're going, what more do we want to do? And then also panel discussions throughout the week, focused on literature, and visual arts and design, and our theater, and, you know, how to be a maker in town. So we're really trying to create a very active week, as well as theater and music events and other launches and stuff, so we're really excited. We hope you'll join us for the week. I'd like to recognize a couple of people that are here.
Absolutely.
Start out with our city staff again. Mike Schatz, who is the Economic Development Administrator for, or Director for the city, Ray French, in our department as well, Amy Kalman again, as well as Ann Sessions from the Chippewa Valley Theater Guild, who's in the back. Stand up, Ann.
Stand up.
Ann is the Executive Director for the Theater Guild in town, as well as Ellie McGee and Serena Wagner, who are with Odd Brand Strategies, a new design firm in town, and they are also going to be launching a new professional organization for designers in town as part of the week, so another great addition, so.
And there's a whole bunch of other people there, too.
Oh, we do. Who else?
Joan Burke, John Burke, Terri Meyer?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, you guys snuck in back there.
Who's going to have a piece in the sculpture tour, this being installed, I believe, Saturday morning?
It's there now?
It's there. Okay. Artists and metal sculptor, and painter, and stuff. Vicki Haynes is here.
Yes, Vicki Haynes, our Executive Director for Downtown Eau Claire Inc., among other things.
Yeah. Thank you all. Oh, and there's Scott Rogers.
Everybody's stopping.
Did I miss anybody? We're just so grateful that there is this energy in our city, and it's because all of you, all of us are pulling together and creating a really great city, so, thanks. Go artists.
Next, we have a proclamation about police, or Peace Officers Memorial Day, and would Sergeant Jesse Henning with the Police Department honor guard. I'll read a part of the proclamation, and it goes like this. The Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. The members of law enforcement in the city of Eau Claire and the Chippewa Valley play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens. It's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property. Each year, Police Week is an opportunity to honor these officers, peace officers, who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. The Eau Claire Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency that unceasingly provides a vital public service, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of all citizens. Now, therefore, the city council does call upon all citizens of Eau Claire and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through May 21st as Police Week.
Thank you.
A few words.
On behalf of the city of Eau Claire Police Department, I would like to thank the city for the proclamation recognizing Police Week. It very much is an important week, not only for officers locally, but on a nationwide standard as well. A week that recognizes officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty, safeguarding and protecting their community. On a local level, on May 17th at 10:00 AM at Hickory Hills Golf Course, we'll be doing a local law enforcement memorial to recognize officers who have been killed in the line of duty on a regional basis here in Wisconsin. And again, just thank you to the city of Eau Claire.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
And our last proclamation today recognizes the Eau Claire Fire and Rescue Services. Would Mr. Deputy Chief, I always have to get the titles right, Deputy Chief John Schultz meet me at the podium.
And Chief Lawson, hi.
How you doing?
Chief.
A few words before the Deputy Chief speaks. Emergency medical services are vital to our community, and the members of the Eau Claire Fire and Rescue are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Citizens benefit daily from the knowledge and the skills of these highly-trained individuals. Eau Claire Fire and Rescue personnel continue to visit area grade schools, providing EMS and water safety education to over 1,500 4th and 5th grade students. It's appropriate to recognize, therefore, the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services that is provided by designated Emergency Medical Services Week, and by recognizing the theme EMS Always in Service. And therefore, the city council does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th Emergency Medical Services Week. Deputy Chief?
Thanks, everybody. On behalf of the EMTs and the paramedics of the Eau Claire Fire Department, as well as local first responders, hospitals, law enforcement, and dispatch, thank you for your continued support. It is very much appreciated. It is very much appreciated. Our requests for EMS service are going up every year. The numbers continue to increase, and this dedicated team of individuals works diligently to provide quality and timely EMS care to all residents and visitors of the City of Eau Claire and also Eau Claire County. So, thank you again for your support.
Yes. I think you said she could hear. I don't know. We're wondering if the mic is on, but you could hear? Okay. Thanks. We'll continue our work this afternoon then with the business agenda, which begins with item number 13. A resolution granting a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B wine license to Regis Catholic Schools for the Regis All-Class Reunion. Mr. Holfer.
This is a application for a temporary beer and wine license for the Regis High School class reunion activity scheduled to take place on Friday and Saturday, June 23rd and 24th. The activity itself is scheduled to be from 5:30 to 11:00 each night with some live entertainment from 7:00 to 11:00. My understanding is the live entertainment, one night is a, is a folk band called Chalet Lads, and Saturday is another folk-type music. I've been told there is likely to be zero interest in either of these bands from the under 21 set, and so there really shouldn't be a concern that it's going to attract any underage consumption. The, ask for the alcohol license premises is going to be fenced in area on the Fenwick Avenue side of the building. The license is also good, going to include the auditorium. It's my understanding the auditorium is only going to be used if there's inclement weather. They intend to have a number, you know, the standard expectations for this kind of event as far as the number of licensed bartenders, number of volunteers. They're going to wristband those who are 21 and older. They expect somewhere between 200 to 250 people total over the two days. It's in conjunction with class reunion activities, which include a golf outing. They have not had this specific activity before, but they did mention that this is intended to be much smaller in scope than rendezvous days. You may remember those activities a year, years back. There weren't any objections at license review to granting this license.
Questions for Mr. Holfer? And I see none. Thank you. On a motion by Councilmember T. Walt, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 13 is moved. Discussion? And there being non-clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinghammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 14 is a resolution authorizing the RCU Foundation to conduct a revised RCU Charity Classic on Saturday, June 24th. Mr. Pippinger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Royal Credit Union Charity Classic Rock the Riverfront is an annual fundraising run-walk event that is family-friendly, community event, open to everyone. This year's event will occur on Saturday, June 24th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and will take place in the Phoenix Park, including trails and roads through Carson Park and Owen Park. Changes that bring this special event back to City Council are additional closing of city streets along the run-walk course. This map shows those additional areas. On West Grand and 7th, West Grand and Lake, and additionally at Carson Park Drive are the additional road closures. And this was re-recommended to come back from the PD because it's additional to what is normally closed at this time. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Ms. Vicki Hayne from RCU is here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions also.
Questions for Mr. Pippinger or Ms. Hayne? Did you want to comment on your? Okay. I see no questions, and thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Klinghammer, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 14 is moved. Discussion? And there being non-clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinghammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes.
Good luck with your new event. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing the reappropriation of funds from the library CIP fund balance to the library building repairs. I have Ms. Wesby on my agenda, but I don't see her in chambers.
Before you this afternoon is a reappropriation of funds from the capital account for the, for the public library into their operating account in order to fund some changes that were made to employee benefits this last year. They need additional funds within their operating account and therefore are proposing to reappropriate funds from a couple of capital projects back into the, back into the operating budget. Those capital projects won't move forward this year.
Questions? I see none. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 15 is moved. Discussion? There being non-clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 16 is a resolution approving the 2017 Mass Urban Transit Operating Assistance Grant with the State, Wisconsin State Department of Transportation. Mr. Wagner?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The agreement is, allows us to get reimbursed for expenses. We've already occurred. This was based on the budget that was approved by you last November. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wagner? I guess not, and thank you for.
Thank you.
On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 16 is moved. Discussion? And there being non-clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinghammer?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We enter, if there are next two items, considering some agreements, the first of which is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Veterans Tribute Foundation in regards to a veterans' tribute trail on the Forest Street Greenway. I think Mr. Pippinger has some follow-up from last evening. No, you're just here to.
Just here if you have any questions.
Questions? Questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Pippinger, I'm in a reference on page 98 of our council packet for today, in specifics of the MOU. Last night, we learned that, if I understood the presentation correctly, that there was an architect who has already donated their engineering services and has designed the project, and I'm wondering how that coincides with pending receipt of necessary approvals, then an allowable public procurement method to secure an engineer consulting, et cetera, et cetera, would, would start. Is this a different type of engineer that would be working on this project?
There are times where groups will have an engineer, an architect, that can draft plans, but it still has to go through our vetting process of going through waterways, parks, the plan commission, and then City Council approval. Additionally, what we require is that we typically on projects like this is that we'll meet with neighborhood associations to get feedback. So, even if a design is being developed, it doesn't mean that it can't change with input from the neighborhood associations and groups. It would be, it'd be essentially the same thing that we would do if someone would give us the money. We would hire an architect or an engineering consultant to do the design work for us. This group has found a reputable design architect that is providing this for free, but it still has to go through the vetting process and the state approvals.
I have another question on a slightly different topic. It also says in here that people who are working on the project have to represent themselves in a positive way when they are reflecting the city and the park, and I'm wondering what happens if the organization, the city deems that someone is not representing in such manner, then what?
Well, it would give us the, the ability to back out of the agreement. If, if for some reason, the, whatever group that we have an agreement with, with an understanding, we have the ability to say, we're not going to be involved with this at this time.
Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. I, I didn't ask this question last night, but it occurred to me. The, the map that was put up there with the green space that showed the, from the comprehensive plan, I think it was the city plan, had, had always a trail sort of planned through the middle of that, that area, and it sounds like the right-of-way is being looked at as well for this new plan. Is there a reason that the trail would not be more along the riverbank and it's going through the city right-of-way? I know you mentioned it was a FEMA, and that might be an easier issue, but it seems like we have other trails that, that run right along the river, and I guess that was just curious about that.
During the discussions with Wisconsin Emergency Management and FEMA in regards to what would be the best direct trail to have, because we already have a, a right-of-way from a former street that used to be there, that was one that would have the least amount of issues with being approved on that part, because when we, when we bought the property, many of these properties, I believe it was 17 of them, with Wisconsin Emergency Management money, there, there were conditions put on that, that we had to maintain a green space in this area. So, anything that we would change or make improvements on, it has to have approval. And this was one of the options that would have been least, I guess, disruptive.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I have a similar question. If we look back at the, some of the budget documents, I look back at the old water, old waterways plan that goes back to 2010, I think. It, it looks like, we've always said there would be a trail through here to match up with the, one to the south. And it looked to me like it was always planned to be on this right-of-way, but I couldn't really tell. Do you know, as, as the city has talked about putting a trail through here, was it always thought to be on that old right-of-way?
Well, I believe it was somewhere near that area, but from the master plan that I could pick up from 2012, again, these are conceptual, and so where it eventually falls is determined upon what, what works for us. But I, I've seen many designs where going up on top of the bank, coming around like this, so it, it really depends upon what works best for us and where we're going to bring it, because initially, we did think that we were going to bring the trail from the Hybridge through this upper area, but we, after looking at it more and studying it more, it became more of a problem, because we have a lot of activity back in this area with vehicles moving from central maintenance, not only all of our, our trucks for plowing, but also for the buses and so forth. There's a lot of activity through that area. So, we were looking at the safety aspect.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Pippinger, when I hear reference of the city right-of-way, what is, what is that? What does that refer to?
Through this area.
Is it essentially the gravel road that runs through?
Right. There, there used to be an old road, it used to be called River Street, that used to run right through this area, and there were houses on, I believe on either side of it at, at one time. And as it went through, this was a, considered a city street. So, there was a right-of-way through here that went all the way to William Street.
So, just for clarification, the plan that the Veterans Tribute Trail is showing right now is along the lines of the conceptual drawing or along the lines of the city right-of-way?
It's more in the city right-of-way. So, go, coming from William Street, which is right here, this old right-of-way runs from here all the way up to Hyacinth Street, right to here. So, that's where this runs, and that's.
That's what their plans show so far?
That's what their plans show.
Did it, do we? No. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pippinger. Questions? I see that's the end of our questions. Thank you for that update. Councilmember Worthman?
Could I ask, because I know there's FEMA regulations on what the trail could be made of. Do we know, do you know that so far? It's, is it, is it, it's not paved, I'm assuming?
It has to be pervious pavers or something that water can actually go through and it can't, can't be impervious.
Thanks.
Thank you again. So, as is our habit, we come around to a motion by Councilmember T. Walt, seconded by Councilmember Weld. The resolution is then moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Strobel?
I, I strongly support the resolution, and I just wanted to compliment the group that's moving this forward. I think it's another example of a partnership with the city for a planned portion of the city trail that, that actually a private group will fund for us. I think it's an underused city park and green space, so I think there's a great tribute to the veterans. We also heard that it'll draw tourism from veterans groups and others, and so I think it's truly a win-win for the community, and, and I do strongly support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I think, you know, hats off as well to the veterans who have come together, Supervisor Beckfield and, and all the efforts that have been put into this. As someone who helped as a founder of the, as a volunteer and founder of the Forest Street Community Garden, where over 100 gardeners currently garden and have for the last eight years, I think there's the vision that this can be a real win-win to bring, you know, more folks into that park, to connect people who are interested in different things, but I think could collaborate and benefit from each other, and, and I think that's, that's really exciting. It's also exciting to see this sort of development in downtown as well. I think it'll draw, as Councilmember Strobel said, it'll draw more people, even more people to downtown, and it's exciting part of a connection through to the Cannery District as we've talked about. One of the things that, you know, I think is a way for this to succeed is to look at how to better integrate and work with and collaborate between the different groups that already use and utilize that park, and we, we already have a track record in our city of doing that, whether it's the Farmer's Market Pavilion or the Labyrinth or any other of the public structures where both public and private partnerships are found. And in fact, and probably already over 10 years ago when public mar, I'm sorry, 15 years ago when the Farmer's Market Designs. have a track record in our city of doing that, whether it's the Farmer's Market Pavilion, or the Labyrinth, or any other of the public structures where both public and private partnerships are found. And in fact, probably already over 10 years ago, when public, I'm sorry, 15 years ago, when the Farmer's Market designs were started, our City Parks and Rec Department actually brought together stakeholders from all different areas and said, "How can we create a design that's mutually beneficial to everyone?" And as I understand it, that process is still to happen here. While the plans have certainly been, haven't been as public to this juncture, I think, here forward, especially with this agreement, they will be and they ought to be. And to that end, I've actually crafted up a motion that looks at how to gain better input from all the different user groups that are in our city, whether it's community gardeners, whether it's neighborhood users or community users. And I will pass this out, but essentially, this is a process that's already likely going to happen, but it clarifies it and puts it into the memorandum under City Responsibilities, number three. Should I read it?
Yep. Helps us think about it a little bit.
Sure. This motion would amend and add subsection three to paragraph three under City Responsibilities, which is to seek input on designs and, design and project implementation for the Veterans Tribute Trail from user groups of the Forest Street Greenway, including but not limited to Eau Claire Veterans Organizations, the North Riverfront's Neighborhood, the Forest Street Community Garden, with the objective of creating the Veterans Tribute Trail in a manner that considers the mutual benefits of all users of the Forest Street Greenway, and is consistent with city planning documents and operational considerations for the use and maintenance of this public space. And after contacting our city manager and our city attorney, my understanding is that this essentially is a process that will already happen, but this language helps to clarify that.
Councilmember Withman offers this motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. Discussion is then in order. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very grateful that there's a clarification here of this language. I too think this is a wonderful partnership on the horizons. And as I shared last night, I have family members who have served and/or are serving right now. And it's a really important thing to have a place that people can go to, to process and heal their experience or their family members' experience. And I think that what's in common with the community garden is that a lot of people turn to horticulture to look for healing. And so this is a place where healing can occur for many different reasons. I think that sometimes the way that we include people, even with the best intentions, sometimes the message gets lost in there. And so I think this addition of the wording and clarification adds accountability to the good intentions for all user groups to make this as successful it can be.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I too would like to thank all those who have helped make this happen so far. I'm really excited about this project. I live just a block from the park that this project is proposed in, and I'm also a gardener at the Forest Street Garden there. And I think that this project will add so much to my neighborhood and to our city as a whole. I am also very grateful for Councilmember Withman's amendment to seek this input. You know, being a neighbor and being a community gardener and being so excited about this project, I am really looking forward to positive input from all of the stakeholder groups. So I'll definitely be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I'll support the amendment as well. I think that we heard last night that there is already a great deal of cooperation happening, and there was an interest on the part of at least two of the groups that we heard, we only heard from two groups last night, but the two we did, from people who garden and from the veterans group, that they want to continue that cooperation. I mean, we would notice in the recitals that it does say that the project has to complement the existing uses within the park, including neighborhood garden space. And that's important, but I think that this paragraph, I think it's good to have this in writing to, it's just good to have it in writing. So I will support it.
And further discussion on the motion to amend. We'll call the roll on this. Madam City Clerk, when you're ready. Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
T. Wald?
No.
Weld?
Aye.
Withman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that motion to amend passes. We are back to the Memorandum of Understanding Resolution, as amended. Further discussion on the resolution? There being none, oh, Councilmember T. Wald?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reiterate what a great reception that was from public coming last night. And we heard all the parties working together. And that's one of the reasons I didn't want to get in the way with the paragraph. The council has made a decision. I support that. I understand that. But it was very fantastic to hear that outpour of gardeners, outpour of the veterans, just the community support the involvement. And it's rightly said that this is a tribute to, not a memorial, and it goes on for not just the past, but for the future. So very excited about this.
And there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember T. Wald?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Withman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We look forward to working with you on the project. Item 18 is a resolution approving the Memorandum of Understanding, another one between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Marathon LLC, in regards to a pickup and drop-off area near the Carson Park Baseball Stadium. Mr. Pippinger?
Before the city council is a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Marathon LLC. This memorandum of understanding is for the Eau Claire Marathon Group to fundraise for the construction of a roundout for pickup and drop-off point by Carson Park Baseball Stadium. The group approached the city earlier this year regarding a problem that they were having during the marathon. Because of the number and the size of the marathon has grown over the years, they are using buses to transport people in and out of the park for the event. And part of the problem that they had was coming into the stadium to be able to turn the buses around to get back out. So what was proposed is that we would put a roundout in, this is Carson Park Drive, this is the Hank Aaron Plaza of the baseball stadium, and this is the road that goes back into the softball fields and the tennis area. We look at this as being a very positive public-private partnership, because it will enhance their ability to get buses in. We'll be able to actually fit three buses into this roundout area, so they can pick up and drop off at this point, rather than having to come in and back up into this area, which is a dangerous maneuver for when you've got so many people around. Additionally, where it helps us is that we do have some folks that are handicapped that come to the stadium, and it gives us the abilities for those folks to come in, drop off, and actually access the park through the handicap ramps we have going into the stadium. The agreement requires fundraising of 50% of the cost of the project, which is estimated to be approximately $80,000. The Marathon Group will provide $4,000 per year for 10 years, or the term of this agreement. The Memorandum of Understanding includes responsibilities of the city, the Marathon Group, and the capital campaign in terms of the agreement. The Department of Community Service staff believe that this partnership will be beneficial to the parties by expanding access and safety of the roundout, and improve access for community physical activity and positive social interaction through improvement of the roundout. The Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval of this project at their April 26 meeting. Mr. Pat Toutant is here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions also.
Questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation, and this sounds like a very practical solution to get people moving in and out. How would this, if this passes, how would this intersect with the causeway that's on the horizon this year and the construction? And would this impede any flow of traffic while the causeway is being constructed?
That's a good question, because we plan on constructing this during the same time that the causeway is under construction, so we're not disrupting both at the same time, or in around that. So when the causeway is down, we plan on constructing this. One thing to add is that during the recent marathon, they had 17 buses routing through the city to bring people into the area. They ran over 1,700 miles with the buses and carried thousands of spectators in and out of the park. And again, that helps with the congestion of the number of people that are very interested in this activity going in the city.
The city certainly was abuzz with the marathon.
It was.
It was wonderful. Councilmember Strobel?
I would agree with that. The marathon is great for the city. I just have a, I'm sure this has been engineered, but I'm trying to get through my head here where the causeway comes, where the, coming up the hill there?
Yep, this would be coming up the hill.
So it'd just be coming straight up the hill there, and then the turnaround would be right there. So the buses just come through and then swing right back around?
They would come through this way, they can go out this way, or they can come out this way. During this time, the traffic is closed into the park, so it'd be just the buses coming through.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a question about when it's not the marathon weekend, then this is accessible for other buses or parking? There'd be no parking, but what would it?
Well, typically, yes, it would be, it'd be there for other buses or drop-off of people, but we wouldn't have any parking through here. That would defeat the purpose of, eventually it'd get clogged up, and then you wouldn't be able to use it.
So, but it would be available for use 365 days a year for other buses, I guess?
Absolutely.
Great. Does Mr. Toutant wish to speak to his project, or do you know?
It's, for our event, which is only one day, it's a great help. But my thought was, when I learned of the causeway, if we're going to do it, let's do it at the same time. I really think our event can go on without this. I think there is a safety issue of backing buses. I mean, the bus people came to me and said, "If this event continues to grow, we have a real problem of backing buses up when there's children and people." The marathon has been extremely successful, and one great thing that's happened, last year, an organization by the name of My Team Triumph came and tested our event. And My Team Triumph is an organization that takes disabled people, puts them in wheelchairs, they're called the captains, and then they form teams around that captain called Angels, and they run events like this. And so last year, we had three teams come and they tried us. This year, we had nine, and it was completely full. They want to start a chapter here, and that really put a light bulb in my head and said, you know, yeah, this bus will work for the runners and the participants and things like that, but it also opens up this entire park to a really important, I think, segment of our population, not only for the marathon, but for baseball and for everything else. I believe that this park is a hidden gem. I grew up here. I could start and end that marathon in a lot of places. But, you know, this year, we had 4,200 runners, we had 20-plus thousand spectators, we had 15,000 estimated in the park. The comments that you hear from out of state, out of town, and local people is that this thing is the real deal, and they love starting and finishing Carson Park, and with all the great things going on in this community, we're losing parking. And we tested the mass transit theory a couple of years ago, and we didn't know how people would react to it. We had more and more comments this year from people that said, "You know what? I just drove up to CVTC, I parked my car, I jumped on a bus, and I drove in, and it's great." So my thoughts are, if we really want to use that park to its ability, not just for our event, but for others, Fourth of July, and what it could be, I think that the ability to move people in and out of that thing in a safe way is really important. So it's a suggestion, it's not something that has to be done to support or maintain our event, but I do think the timing is right. If we're going to consider it, let's do it along with this Confluence project, as I have to believe that cuts our costs in half, if not more. And I think it's just a good thing for the park in general.
Thank you, Mr. Toutant. Thank you. Is that listed? Any more questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Just maybe a technical question. Is there a reason why the crosswalk and kind of closest to the Hank Aaron statue side is not striped?
Right here?
Uh huh.
This is just conceptual. We can stripe that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see no further questions. Thank you. I didn't move this yet, right? So, on a motion by Councilmember Klinkhammer, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 18 is moved. Discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Withman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Wald? Aye. And that resolution passes. Item 19 is a resolution approving the final plat named Western Avenue, located on the east side of Western Avenue, north of Waller Street. Mr. Tufti?
This is the property off Western Avenue, north of Waller, Hastings Way, went the wrong way. That's the preliminary plat as approved by Plan Commission. It creates four lots, one, two, three, four, for four-plex development, plus two outlots. And this is the final plat for the project. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat. It also legally defines areas in excess of 20% slope and labels them non-builable. It provides utility easements, and the Plan Commission recommended approval.
Questions for Mr. Tufti? Basina, thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Withman, item 19 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Withman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We enter now into three resolutions regarding some vacant land the city owns, with the first resolution declaring vacant land on East Madison Street adjacent to 705 Division to be excess land. Ms. Basina?
Before I use a resolution declaring this small parcel excess land, it's Long Madison and Geranium, the adjacent property owner right here is the 705 Division. In 1976, the city purchased this property as a large Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye. And that resolution passes. We enter now into three resolutions regarding some vacant land the city owns, with the first resolution declaring vacant land on East Madison Street adjacent to 705 Division to be excess land. Ms. Basim.
Before you use a resolution declaring this small parcel excess land, it's Long Madison and Geranium, the adjacent property owner right here is the 705 Division. In 1976, the city purchased this property as a large portion of land when we were creating the Madison Street and Geranium Street realignment. The section of land is what is left over after that realignment was done. The assessed value is about $300,000. We are looking to sell it to the adjacent property owner at a later time. That'll be brought forward. It's about 1,515 square feet, and it was recommended by the Plan Commission at their May 1st meeting.
Thanks. Questions for Ms. Basim? Masina? Oh, Councilmember Weld? Is that a question? Okay, that's good. On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 20 is moved, and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Struble?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Struble?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Klinkammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Struble?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Finally, a resolution declaring like vacant land at 318 Elm Street to be excess land. Ms. Basim.
So, this parcel, this parcel of land is along Elm Street and north Barstow Street. In 2004, this was acquired as part of a lien on back taxes. The property, there was a building on the property that we did demolish, and we did incur the special assessments that were on the property. The property is being assessed at $50,000. We are going to send out a proposal for a, with intentions of a multifamily. It's 16,800 square feet, and it was recommended at the May 1st Plan Commission.
And questions? There are none, and thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Klinkammer, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 22 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Struble?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Finally, on our business agenda, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to proceed with final design, development, and construction bidding documents and solicitation of bids for replacement of fire station number 10. Mr. Wenzens.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid. Before you, this afternoon, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to proceed with development of design plans and specifications for the bidding of the replacement of fire station number 10. The existing station was constructed in 1949, is approximately 9,700 square feet in size and located at Hastings Way and Birch Streets. The city has now acquired a parcel of land upon which to locate new fire station on Malden Avenue, and thus are now ready to proceed with final design and development of the construction bidding documents. The proposed station preliminary design includes sleeping accommodations for six firefighters, includes a day room, a kitchen facility, and eating facilities, as well as a exercise room, conference room, and other rooms associated with the, necessary for the conduct of a fire service, things such as laundry room, decontamination rooms, restrooms, shower facilities, those sorts of, those sorts of activities. The design shown here includes five equipment bays, but as indicated in the memo, we will be recommending, or are recommending, that the initial base bid be for the station that you see here, plus the three equipment bays. The other two equipment bays, we would propose be additive alternates to the bid and could be awarded at such time when bids are received, depending upon the pricing of those bids. The construction costs for the proposed station, just the construction costs, are $3.23 million. But in addition, we have land acquisition costs, professional services, which are the services to design the facility, as I said, the construction costs, construction management, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, which is FFNE, and a contingency at this point in time. So the total estimated cost for the construction of this station is $4.581 million. That is the project that we are recommending proceed to design at this point in time. As far as location on the site goes, we are recommending that this, that this station be constructed on the, on the northern part of the, of the Malden Avenue site. Malden Avenue is to the, is on the eastern side of the station. We've got Birch on the, on the south, and Galloway comes into the intersection here with the, with river crossing. The, this site was formerly used as a, as a town dump, if you will, at some point in the past. Most of the garbage on the site is located at the southern end of the site, so by building to the north, it will minimize the construction cost for the proposed station. We have received cost estimates to build on the southern part of the site as well, and those estimates increased the construction costs by about $300,000. So we will be recommending design occur for a station located on the northern, northern part of the site. The current budget for the station, or the current funding that has been appropriated is $4.15 million. In order to fund the recommended station, we will be including an additional $500,000 in the proposed, in the 2018 through 2022 capital improvements plan. When we adopted the capital improvements plan last year, we had anticipated including $800,000 for 2018. So actually, the amount we will be proposing is slightly less than what we had anticipated needing a year ago when we developed, developed the CIP. So with that, I would be happy to answer, answer questions, and we are recommending that the city council adopt the attached resolution with, which authorizes the city manager to proceed with final design and the development of construction and bid documents. Just a reminder that, that authorizes the development of those documents and the solicitation of bids. Those bids will come back to the city council before any award, and we will have a recommendation at that time about how to proceed concerning the additional equipment bays.
Thank you. A question by Councilmember Mitchell.
Thank you. When this project came to the Plan Commission for rezoning and, I guess, a general development plan, staff recommended the southern location. Will there be a constitutional crisis when the site plan comes back? And, or have you worked this out with Mr. Tufti?
We have a, we have a little bit of a difference of opinion concerning the location, and that's healthy to have between staff. But, no, the, our, the city manager's recommendation at this time is the, is the northern, northern location, and that is largely for, for the financial reasons concerning that, that particular site.
Yes, go one more. So the, the, in order to build the recommended building with, with three bays, we need an additional half a million dollars. And so if that goes out to bid, are you just hoping that the bids will come in low enough that perhaps it will allow for the addition of two more bays? Or why, why not just ask for it all right now?
Well, we're trying to be frugal and, and, and keep this within what, what we believe to be a reasonable, a reasonable budget. Yes, the hope by including those as an additive alternate is that the bids will come in favorable, and that we will be able to, to proceed within, within that, within that budget. Now, recent experience with a, with a certain parking structure, you know, was that, you know, while the bids didn't come in so favorable that we could do it within the existing project, the bids did come in favorable, and we decided to add a fourth level to the parking structure at that time. That same, that same thing could happen. I mean, if, if the bids come in and it's $50,000 to add those additional two bays, you know, staff's recommendation very well may be, let's proceed and, and appropriate the additional funds to do that. If on the other hand, it's $500,000, then we may say that's, that's, that's simply too much. So it allows us that flexibility.
Other questions? Councilmember Struble?
Thank you. Mr. Wenzens, I guess my question was, it looks like the projected cost is about 10% greater than what we expected it to be. So if the 431,000, it was, it was budgeted at 4.15 million, and it's coming in, we think about 4.5?
It's...
What caused that?
It's actually not, not higher, because we, as I indicated, we had included $800,000. We had expected to need additional $800,000 as part of the 2018 CIP. So actually, it's coming in right around, you know, right around where we thought it would be, even a little bit, a little bit less than where we thought, thought it would be when we planned the CIP last year. Yeah?
It's just a bit confusing for me when it says the budget for the replacement of fire station 10 is 4.15 million, and the cost estimate is 4.5 million.
Right. And by budget, I meant the, the allocated budget, or the, the funds that have been appropriated are 4.15 million dollars. The 2017, last year's CIP included an additional $800,000 for 2018 for the fire station. So last year, when we planned the CIP, we expected that we would need additional funds.
And now that's being reduced from 800 to 500?
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tewalt?
Thank you, Council President. Could you put up the diagram again and highlight the path of where the fire trucks are getting in and out?
Yeah, the, the, all of the bays, the, the three bays here are all planned to be drive-through bays.
And then where, how do they access the street there? If you can reference that diagram. So where are the bays located?
So, yeah, the, this is a, this is a parking lot. The, the building is here, the bays are right in this particular area, so vehicles will be able to come in off of Malden Avenue, come around to the backside of the building, pull into the bay, and then be facing, be facing Malden Avenue when, when a call comes in, and then they'll be able to leave directly out onto Malden Avenue.
Okay, that leads my, to my question. By moving this building to the south, we would have a lot of space to be able to expand for more bays. Here, it looks like we're started in a landlocked corner, if I'm understanding it. We're at the end of the lot, we have some room, and if something changes, we found fire trucks got larger, we found other things. Now to expand, we have space on the parking lot side, which is now a different building, which would be a greater cost. So I'm, wonder if you can explain again why the Planning Commission recommends the opposite end, and we're moving it there? Because logistically, it seems we're, we're perhaps not making the best use of future options and resources in tying ourselves down.
We can, we can certainly shift the station slightly to the, slightly to the south if there's a concern, but five, this is a, this is a satellite station. Five bays for a satellite station is, is, should be more than adequate. In fact, a satellite station generally, three bays would be adequate. We just happen to have a lot of equipment stored at station number 10 that, that we would need to find another home for without, without the five bays. The, the site plan for a station at the, at the southern end, end of the site doesn't leave a lot of additional room for, for bay, expansion of the bays. This site plan has, has the vehicles returning in off of Malden Avenue, coming into the backside of the equipment storage areas, or they could come in off of Birch Street and come, come back in this way, although that's a more difficult turning move, turning movement. But again, there's not a ton of additional expansion opportunities for equipment bays, simply because, you know, again, for a satellite station, five bays is, is, is quite a bit.
Another question, if I may. My question then is on to the street that it enters on Malden. You know, if a car is disabled in there, and there's some traffic, and we have winter, wouldn't it be wise at this time to expand that street for that stretch to get access? So remember, it's not really a great wide street there, and isn't it a down incline as we come into Birch?
I believe it is a down incline coming into Birch, but I haven't heard any representatives of the fire department express any concern over the width of Malden Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzens. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question about the interior of the building. I see that there's going to be two showers and restrooms in addition to the six dorm rooms. Is the intention that if there is a female firefighter, that she would be able to have one of the restrooms, or maybe more than one female firefighter?
There are separate male and female restrooms and shower facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see no further questions. I'll move the item then on a motion by Councilmember Struble, seconded by Councilmember Worthman. That leaves discussion in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Klinkammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Struble?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Here we go. That ends our business agenda and opens up three ordinances for action tonight, the first being number 24, an ordinance in accordance with Section 66 of the Wisconsin statutes, annexing to the city of Eau Claire, part of the town of Washington known as the Lechner petition? Mr. Tufti? I didn't read that very well. I'm sorry.
It was good.
Okay, thank you.
This is the property off Sessions at London Road. It's a 1.89 acre site. There is a residence on it that... There is a residence on it that is planned to be removed for the development of the property. Sanitary sewer and water is available in Sessions Street. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and Plan Commission recommended approval.
Councilmember, do you have a question?
No, I'm.
I see no questions, and thank you. And then, motion then by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember T. Walt. Item 24 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
T. Walt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. Item 25 is an ordinance amending the table of the City of Code, Code of Ordinances entitled "Speed Limits by Changing Various and Many Sundry Speed Limit Locations Throughout the City." All very well documented, though. Questions of staff from our presentation last night? And then, motion then by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Klinkamer. Item 25 is moved and discussion is in order. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you, Council President. I, I want to make an amendment to this and I think I'd like to speak about it a little bit before I move the amendment. Is, would that be okay?
Time to go.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just move the amendment and then I'll speak on it. That's okay. So, I'd like to move that the language changing or updating the speed limit for Harding and MacArthur remain how it was before, before these changes were made. So, basically, the, my, my amendment would be to keep the speed limit there low rather than raising it to be consistent with signage.
Pardon me, I'm just going to find the resolution here. So, on page, you know where it is? So, on page 133, from Washington Street to Brackett, we would strike, strike the line. Strike the line that struck the line. That would be your motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Worthman. Then you may speak to your motion.
Thank you. So, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that I, I understand that this wasn't necessarily the intent of this, these changes and that, and that these changes were brought to us by staff just to make our ordinance consistent with the signage that is already out, out there. And I also wanted to thank the staff for putting in this, obviously, hard work to update this ordinance. And though I understand that this necessarily wasn't the intent, I think it is a good time to talk about the speed limits in certain places in our city and how they affect safety. We did hear last night that several of the streets that we're talking about today have been deemed dangerous by the people who, pedestrians and bikers that are using them. And I guess my, my thinking for Harding and MacArthur is that I have had personal experiences with, with safety and injury at Harding in particular and have heard of issues in MacArthur anecdotally as well. And so, you know, since that these roads are, have been dangerous for our citizens in the past, I think it, it may be a good time to look at them and see, you know, whether they need to be signed differently and whether they should be held consistent or had, held at the same speed limit as they were previously in our ordinance, so.
I'm just going to ask a clarification. So, you're interested actually in two streets. Harding and MacArthur. Harding Avenue is struck on our, could you, maybe Mr. Solberg could help us?
Sure.
MacArthur is not struck.
Correct. MacArthur currently, and I'll begin with MacArthur, in the current ordinances are, is contained in the 30 mile an hour table from State Street to Craig Road. That portion that was in your, in your display in the council packet yesterday indicated a section that did not have street signing currently in place. So, we weren't recommending an ordinance change for that. We were just pointing out that there are areas that the signs aren't consistent with the ordinance for that. So, that was, that was MacArthur Street. Harding Avenue appears in the existing Code of Ordinances twice. So, Harding Avenue appears in the 30 mile an hour speed limit table, right here from Washington Street to Brackett Avenue. And it also appears in the existing 35 mile an hour table, Harding Avenue from East Street to Lee Street, with different terminology than it exists. So, we, since it's in the table twice, the posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour, we are going to remain, leave this part of the ordinance unchanged and remove it from the redundant content in the 30 mile an hour table, for clarification, so.
Councilmember Mitchell? May I ask a question of Mr. Solberg? So, when, when, when you noticed that some of the streets were signed inappropriately and this process started, if we look at the table on page 137, you, you did go ahead and do quite a bit of studying of the speed limits and gathered other data on the streets on that table. Is that correct?
Correct. We, we conducted speed studies, went out and measured the, the physical speed of cars traversing, categorized those as what's, what speed do half the cars travel at that speed or less, or what speed is 85% or less, which are engineering criteria for evaluating whether the speed limit is appropriate or not. And we also looked at traffic crash rates for that segment to see if there were any safety concerns. And then, we also looked at another factor is access points and length of the route, how many driveways, the more driveways you have could weigh into a decision to lower the speed limit if the other factors are indeterminate, for a clear example. So, we, where we were raising the speed limit, where we were placing that section in an ordinance to support what the speed limit is, typically where we raise a speed limit in the ordinance table to match the posted speed limit, we conducted the speed studies. There's an example of Hastings Way last night that's signed at 55, or it's signed at 50, the ordinance says 55, where we lowered it, where there wouldn't be a, a danger of the, the perceived increase in speed and the hazards with that. We didn't conduct a specific speed study at those locations, just the ones where we had concerns that we would have unintended consequences with those.
And I knew the answer to the question, but I thought I would have you answer it yourself because I know I've worked with you and I appreciate all the time that you have put into this. So, you didn't just say, well, because it's been signed 30, we're going to change the ordinance. You studied each and every one of these streets that was signed differently than the ordinance and in addition to that, some that others asked you to do. So, you made individual decisions regarding the ordinance changes.
Correct. We, we didn't apply blanket strategy or blanket treatment to everything. And in one case, I, I didn't expect Tri-X Boulevard and Frost to recommend it to be lowered, the, the posted speed limit. But when we looked at the data and consulted with the police department, we recommended in one stretch actually being signed lower than, than what it was.
Thank you. Another, Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Strobel, just, sorry, it's over. My apologies. Just so I understand, the, the method is essentially you measure the cars and it's 80 percentile, but could it be said that that's then a car-centric way of deciding what the appropriate speed is? Because I find when I'm in a car, I have a different idea of what safety is versus when I'm crossing Harding Ave, three lanes of traffic.
The 85th percentile for the traffic speed, where 85% of the cars are traveling that speed or lower, is the generally accepted threshold for looking at establishing the speed limits. If you look at establishing speed limits through a heavily pedestrian and other-centric lens, you look at the 50th percentile. We look at it holistically to balance pedestrian needs and vehicular needs, so the 85th percentile is more balanced and generally accepted for that. And that's what, that's what we've done for the last three years with our studies. The, the, the 85th percentile on these are all coming back representative of what we would recommend, the posted speed limit, where it is currently, and amending the ordinance to those, with the exception of Tri-X Boulevard.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. I had a conversation with you as well today and had the opportunity to just reiterate and hear about the process, that very in-depth process that you and your colleagues have worked on to gather this data. And one of the questions I asked you about is kind of, by whose standard do you make these recommendations? Not just Mr. Solberg's or Mr. Strobel's, thank goodness. So, you talked about engineering, kind of national standard. And can you talk a little bit about that standard and if that's only looking at cars or is that looking at kind of a holistic picture of multiple users on that stretch of road?
Well, that is one lens that we look at a street. It's, the 85th percentile is established in the transportation engineering community through the Institute of Transportation Engineers. When, and there are a different, multitude of different ways to establish speed limits, depending upon which lens you look at it. Interstate highways, they pick a speed limit that is appropriate for the transportation need for those, and then the design of that is centered around their need to get from point A to point B. When you, we don't necessarily have that need in the city that is as heavily transportation-centric. So, we look at our established methodology to get us on track to have a speed limit that most drivers would expect to encounter. If you have a deviation from what the traveling public expects, whether too fast or too slow, cars will come up on you if you're in a side street trying to hit you or, and would crash at you, or if they're going too slow, it causes problems when you're going to encounter a car, when you're going the normal speed limit. So, the 85th percentile establishes a pretty established driver's expectation of what they would be, feel comfortable driving on that street. We also look at number of side streets, length of the street, intersecting side streets if there are crash concerns. So, it's not the only determining factor that we take when we look at a, a street for the speed limit, but it is a very major factor that we use when we, when we establish that.
Thank you. Seeing no further, oh, Councilmember Beaton?
I have another comment and rather not a question. So, I guess I just wanted to reiterate and with full respect of the process that you put into this project, you know, being somebody who uses particularly Harding Avenue quite regularly as a pedestrian and as a bicyclist, being a person who fully feels what it feels like to be in the middle of that crosswalk there, right in the middle of Harding Avenue, and having, and in fact, been hit by a car on my bicycle as a result of a, a road that is unsafe, in my opinion, I just, I can't feel comfortable, you know, keeping it high if we have this opportunity to lower it, to make it safer. And so, I guess that's, I just wanted to explain my perspective a little bit, having been a victim of, of an accident there on that exact road. You know, in addition to that, I, this is just one perspective that I have, and I realize that it's definitely leading me towards a one direction. And I would feel more comfortable, you know, supporting a, a higher speed limit if, if this had been reviewed by the committee that we have in our city that is dedicated to protecting bicycle and pedestrian safety, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Action Committee. And so, you know, I guess my first ask is to consider safety and my second ask is that we consider allowing the BPAC to review projects like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaton? Oh, Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. If I could just ask for a clarification on what your two motions are, because we heard that MacArthur is in fact, not, it's not struck. And, and so, if I could just ask for clarification.
Mr. Solberg, what, what's the impact of Councilmember Beaton's motion to amend?
We didn't, we did not propose a change for MacArthur, so there, it wasn't, if it were struck, the section that would be desired to be struck from that 30 mile an hour table would have to have the limits established to that, and the revised limits would remain in the table and the struck limits would be absent from the 30 mile an hour and then by default would go back to, go to 25 miles an hour. But currently, there, it was in the table to illustrate that the signing, it was not signed, but it's, that whole stretch is in the ordinance at 30 miles an hour.
So, your idea would, the whole stretch would be 30 miles an hour?
Right.
As it sits now, it sort of comes, goes up and down?
As it sits, we probably should not have drawn attention to that because we weren't proposing an ordinance change. It was just another example of an inconsistency where a route wasn't signed to match what the ordinance was, so.
Okay. I think we'll, are you okay with that, Councilmember Worthman?
Just so I understand, so there's, there's, Mr. Solberg, there's 20, there's some 25 mile an hour signs currently and some 30 currently on MacArthur?
There.
No.
No, MacArthur is not signed.
It's not signed?
And that's portion. But there are 25 mile an hour signs on other routes throughout the city, but just not.
Not in that portion? Okay.
And Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. And I think that I had misunderstood what the changes were to MacArthur from last night. And so, I'm, I'm thinking maybe it's not appropriate to change that at this time.
Okay.
So, but I would like for us to still consider Harding.
So, a, the motioner seeks to remove MacArthur from her motion. And Councilmember Worthman?
I'll, that, I'm okay with that.
And that's a friendly amendment? Is the body okay with that? I see no objection. We're just at Harding.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're ready.
Council President?
We're going to take a vote on the motion to amend the table on Harding Avenue. So, it remains 30 miles an hour, not 35. Sure.
Thank you. You know, I always appreciate the input we receive from members, from public, but I do believe in this case, I won't be able to support this amendment. I think the department that has looked at it has looked at many factors, and I would really like to take this sometime as a separate item, as we do with petitions of citizens or whatever, to focus on one item. It's confusing to know, I, I respectfully hear Councilmember Beaton's experience, but I've had experiences on other streets and then my one experience I can't necessarily say is representative of the entire use of that. So, I'd really liked, that's the reason I'm not going to support it. I'd rather see a study it cleanly in areas based on accident reports, based on citizen input, rather than, as we caught this, getting things in order. Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchell? I agree with Councilmember T. Walt, and I won't be able to support this amendment either. And I'm, if I'm not digressing too much, I might just say that, that a study of Harding Avenue is coming up, including the intersection at Jefferson and Lee. That whole area is going to be studied and there, there may be some speed limit changes at that point. And I don't see that it's wise to change it now and try to get the public accustomed to a new speed limit where, when in a couple of years, it might change again. So, I'll be voting no. Councilmember Worthman?
Council President, thank you, and, and thank you, Ms. Beaton, too, for offering this amendment. One of the reasons that I'll be supporting this is, on the whole, I have been, as a council member, supportive of lower speed limits, and I know that there's understanding of the 85 percentile and how important that is. But the reality is that if 10 pedestrians are hit and it's 30 miles an hour, roughly, five of them survive, roughly five don't. If it's 40 miles an hour and 10 pedestrians are hit, nine out of 10 don't survive. So, anywhere in between there, and the most we can do to lower it, the better. So anywhere in between there, and the most we can do to lower it, the better, in my opinion. I have a friend who was severely injured, had to take many, actually was fired from a job because of an injury, but he was right on that Harding crosswalk, for those of you that have crossed it and know how dangerous it is. Again, the difference between if we can sign it at 30, and maybe people go a little over, versus 35, and people go a little over at 35, makes a difference if there's an accident, and, and good conscience and not, not, you know, doing all we can to, to slow cars down, I'll be supporting this amendment this evening.
Thank you. I believe we are done with our discussion, and clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Councilmember Strobel?
No.
Tewalt?
No.
Weld?
Yes, aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
No.
Kincaid?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
And that motion to amend fails. So we're back to the resolution as unamended, any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll. Are you ready? Okay.
Councilmember Tewalt?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. The last item, or that ordinance is adopted, I said that wrong. The last item for consideration tonight is an ordinance amending chapter 13.10 of the code entitled "Street Escavations and Openings" to include right-of-way use regulations. We received an email this afternoon answering our, and our questions, and proposing a substitute ordinance, which is at your place, there's a paper copy at your place. The chair will be offering the substitute ordinance after the city manager makes some comments regarding the changes and responses to our questions. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, the engineering department and city attorney's office has been working on an ordinance that will help us control the public right-of-way as it relates to the placement of new structures so that they can be done safely in the community. But yet, at the same time, allow for the replacement of our current, you know, utilities that are in place. We've been working with our public utilities in terms of receiving feedback to bring the ordinance forward, there was more feedback that was provided last night. The city attorney's office and the engineering department worked together to incorporate some of that feedback into the substitute ordinance that is before you tonight. There are four areas, one, recognizing that this really is related to structures that are on the right-of-way and not in the right-of-way, which was pointed out last night. Also, the, we've added a further or a more specific definition of what it means to have in-kind replacement, and the ordinance before stated that the structures would have to comply with state law, and we've added that we also need to comply with federal law, as well as electrical laws and codes. And there was feedback on the, on the fees, the proposed fee had been a $200 fee for review, and then annual fee of $200, or $20 after that, in, in talking and reviewing that. The proposal is to have the annual, or the fee to have the proposed utility structure reviewed at $400, but then have no annual fee afterwards. So essentially collecting 10 years of what the annual fee would be right up front, and saving the administrative work for both us as a municipality and then also for the utility. So, those are the, I guess conceptually, the changes that are before you, for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Peters. Questions? The chair seeks a motion then.
I'll move the substitute.
On a motion by Councilmember Klinkhammer?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. The ordinance, the paper ordinance before you. Discussion on that ordinance. I understand our partner is satisfied. Okay. There being no discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Tewalt?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. That brings to an end our work for the evening, other than one ordinance for introduction, and we have a short work session after our meeting adjourns. And that ordinance is to rezone property located at the northwest corner of Claremont Avenue and Craig Road from C-3H to C-3P, and to adopt a general development plan for a hospital with addition and clinic, and to amend the general development plan for property at 21, 2116 Craig Road for building in addition, and to amend a general development for property to the west for loading areas, access drive, and accessory facilities. Do councilmembers wish to suspend the rules and take up this ordinance tonight? I see no such desire, that will be on our agenda at our next scheduled meeting. Announcements, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam President. Just three quick announcements tonight. One is Friday night is the Neighborhood Safety Walk, it's a program with the university and our local police department that is being revived. It's an opportunity to spend some time with public officials and law enforcement between 9:00 and 1:00 in the morning, so it does go kind of late. But it's an opportunity to review kind of the policies and, and some of the statistics, and have some awareness on healthy and unhealthy drinking behavior, and if you haven't participated in that walk in the past, I would encourage it, it's, it can be very informative. And then next Tuesday, at 4:00, is our first-ever City Council Academy, so an opportunity to provide some tools and information for you, to help you be the most effective council members that you possibly can. And then also on Monday, the 22nd of May, just a reminder that we have the border review, we have staffed it at its most minimal level right now, but we'd like to get at least two more, so that there's some capacity in case somebody can't make it at the last minute. So if you haven't signed up for the border review and you have just a little bit of capacity to help us out with that, that would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have, thank you.
Announcements, my councilmembers? And there being no further business to come before this body, and a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, this meeting is adjourned without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired, it will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.